Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Palm Coast, City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017. It is 6:30 PM. Would you please join me in the Pledge of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 18th, 2017, City Council Business and April 25th, 2017, City Council Workshop. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to Proclamations and Presentation. A proclamation designated May 6th, 2017 is Arbor Day. Councilmember Clufus will be presenting this. I think Carol Minnie is here in the audience?
I am.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 6th, 2017, as Arbor Day. Be it further proclaimed that City Council urges all of its citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees, which will promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed this second day of May, 2017, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Melissa Holland.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you know, I'm Carol Minnie. I'm the forester for the City of Palm Coast, and I'm honored to be here tonight to accept this proclamation. The city has been celebrating Arbor Day for the past 12 years, and it is a requirement of our Tree City USA designation that the city holds an Arbor Day celebration, and we are thrilled to do that. And over the 12 years, the event has grown with new activities, new programs, new entertainment, and also with residents. It has grown in popularity. We see every year the crowds gaining and getting larger, so we are thrilled about that. But we always keep the main focus about trees with our Feet of Mouth, Get a Tree, Grow a Community campaign. So we ask residents to please bring in a canned good, a non-perishable item, or even pet food, and we ask that it's not expired, please. And then the city will, in exchange, give you a ticket. You take it back to our tree tent, and we're happy to give you a free three-gallon native tree in exchange for that donation. And as long as Mr. Landon does his part and keeps the weather nice and it doesn't rain, we're gonna... This Arbor Day is gonna be an awesome event. It's gonna be one of the best yet, and really excited about it. And so I ask that you get together with your neighbors, your family, your friends, your children, because there's gonna be a lot of great children activities, and come on out and celebrate Palm Coast's love of trees. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. Also, the Arbor Day Run. Don't forget about that 5K run. I know that you're gonna run, which is awesome. I'm thrilled about that. So, thank you for participating, and I encourage those of you, too, to come on out, and you don't have to run, you can walk it if you'd like as well. So please, come on out, and you can register at 7:00 AM, not a problem, and the race will start promptly at 8 o'clock. Thank you very much, and thank you for your support for this program every year. Thank you, again. Certainly. We're just gonna do a lot. Thank you very much. Yes? That's a great suggestion.
Oh, I will.
The next is Agenda Item Number Three, a proclamation for the Mayor's Healthy Community Challenge. Whereas, exercise is an important component of a healthy life, with the Mayo Clinic recommending at least 30 minutes of physical activity every day, and whereas enjoying an active lifestyle is a hallmark of life in Palm Coast, and one that contributes to an overall high quality of life, and whereas Mayor Melissa Holland is challenging all Palm Coast residents to find their fitness together while also having fun and trying out some of the community's parks and recreation and amenities, whereas Mayor Holland has invited the Flagler County mayors to join in and challenge their communities to participate, and whereas the inaugural Mayor's Healthy Community Challenge will kick off with a ceremony and a walk around the lake during our annual Arbor Day celebration at 10:00 AM, Saturday, May 6th, at Central Park, and whereas participants are also encouraged to sign up for the Arbor Day Root Run 5K Run Walk on the morning of May 6th, whereas participants can sign up for free and see the schedule of activities that will continue into early July at www.palmcoastgov.com/healthy, and also receive recipes and fitness ideas on the city's Facebook page, and whereas the Mayor's Healthy Community Challenge offers activities suitable for all ages and levels of fitness, from nature walks to Water Zumba and kayaking to yoga. Now therefore be it proclaimed that by Mayor Holland and the City Council of the City of Palm Coast that May 6th, 2017, is the official start for the inaugural Mayor's Healthy Community Challenge, and encourages all residents and citizens in Palm Coast and the surrounding cities to sign up and get outdoors and get moving as we join together to become healthier in 2017. Signed by this second day of May, 2017, by Mayor Melissa Holland. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very excited for the first opportunity. I think this program will definitely help us highlight a lot of our recreational amenities, programs ways to just utilize our community. One of the things, me being a new person here, my hairline is, there's nothing to do in Palm Coast. And it's ironic, because, you know, four to five months out of the year, we're in subpar temperatures, and we still found something to do. So for us, as our families came here, we found everything to do in Palm Coast, and so we're hopefully trying to share that with our community residents, and a lot of it's just how to utilize our community in a healthy aspect. And most of it will be a digital platform, because it's very hard for someone to take the initiative to step out and do something in public. So our goal right now is to really be able to challenge people to do it at home or in the community with not necessarily everybody watching. And so a lot of what we're trying to do is just encourage people to be a little bit healthier, but start looking to see what our city really has to offer, and so that's what we're hoping this challenge will actually represent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[834.41]
Let's close out our proclamations with our last of the evening. It's a proclamation recognizing May as Drug Court Month. I believe we have representatives in the audience.
Whereas drug courts are an effective tool for reducing substance abuse and crime in our criminal justice system, and whereas for more than 25 years, drug courts have been restoring lives, reuniting families, and making communities across the nation safe through nearly 3,200 operational drug courts. And whereas drug courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against drug abuse and criminality. And whereas research shows that drug courts are demonstratively effective and significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce drug abuse and crime, and do so at a lower cost than any other justice strategy. And whereas Flagler County Adult Drug Court began in 2006, and 141 people have graduated from the program. And whereas 78% of Flagler County Adult Drug Court graduates have no new felony charges, and 86% of graduates have no new drug charges. And whereas the judges, attorneys, treatment and rehabilitation professionals, court personnel, and others dedicated to drug courts and similar programs are healing families in this community. And whereas the City Council of the City of Palm Coast recognizes the successful work of the practitioners and drug court participants to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby recognize May 2017 as Drug Court Month, and urges all citizens to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's drug court graduates. Signed, this second day of May 2017, Melissa Holland, Mayor of City of Palm Coast.
Mayor, Mayor, member of the council. First, I want to apologize. Judge Craig was supposed to be here, but unfortunately, he's in Putnam doing a trial. We all know how those go. They always run over, so he couldn't make it tonight. My name is Mike Greenear, I'm the Drug Court Coordinator. I have two members of my team here, Mike Felbauer and Dr. John Semenides. As Mr. Cuff said, we're actually in our 11th year. And I know, Madam Mayor, you were a keynote speaker. I don't know if it was his first or second graduation, it was several years ago. Our next graduation is actually slotted for July 14th, Friday, July 14th. I think I've seen all the council members at one of our graduations at one time or another. And they are very moving. And if you haven't been one, I strongly encourage everyone to go to one. I started here July 16th of '07. I went to graduation in Daytona the following day. I didn't know any of these people. I had tears in my eyes. They are so moving. So I strongly encourage you. We all have either a family member or a friend that has a problem with drugs or alcohol. So we can, most of us can relate to this kind of thing. And I think that's probably why it brought tears to my eyes when people get up there and say that one particular person who said, "Thank God for drug court." If it wasn't for drug court, I'd be dead. Pretty powerful statement. And we are very fortunate to have a medical doctor on our team. Not too many drug court teams have that. We're very fortunate to have Dr. Semenides from Wigea Healthcare here in Palm Coast. And Mike Felbauer, member of the community, who's been very involved with drug court for about three years now?
Yeah, a little over three years, yeah.
We're very fortunate. We have a great team.
Well, thank you for all your due. It also helps with the recidivism rate in our community, and there's direct correlation with going through these treatment programs, that it reduces that. So it's not only saving the taxpayer dollars, but it's really creating another opportunity and a second chance for those that are struggling. So thank you. Your commitment to our community is valued.
Thank you for your commitment to us, to drug court.
Thank you. Okay, if everybody could just squeeze together a little. Perfect. Okay, are we ready? All right, we're gonna take a couple. One, two, three. Again, one, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Congratulations. Okay, that concludes our proclamations and presentations. We will now move to presentations. We have, I believe, Ms. Berry in the audience. She is going to bring up her students that will be presenting by Benell Elementary Community Problem Solvers on Project ACTED: Adolescents Coping Through Effects of Divorce. And there's an exciting announcement, because they won Nationals this year.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens, friends, neighbors. We are so pleased to be here tonight. I have five elite problem solvers from Benell Elementary, five fifth graders. One is homesick this evening, but these children have, this is their first year participating in community problem solving. They picked this project themselves. They've had to research it. They've had to make commitments and interviews with public members as well. They really own this project. This project is very close to all of them for one reason or for another. We recently participated at the Florida Future Problem Solvers State Competition. These children's project made it to Grand Champion, and they were invited to compete at the international level. So in June, we will be traveling to University of Wisconsin, lacrosse.[460.03][460.03](applause) And they will be competing with approximately 2,000 other students in various age groups and various components of the Future Problem Solving Program. And when you hear these children speak, you will get a sense of, with this program in Flagler County, which is huge in Flagler County, a great sense of what these young kids are capable of accomplishing and are actually accomplishing for the community as well as their school. So I'd like to introduce to you Project ACTED: Adolescents Coping Through Effects of Divorce.[505.12][505.12](applause)
I will let them introduce themselves to you and tell you about their project.
I am Zachary Bennett.
I'm Jack Gilbarry.
I'm Chloe Long.
And I'm Brad McMillan.
And we are ACTED: Adolescents Coping Through Effects of Divorce. And we just help adolescents in our school who are feeling the effects of a family issue and don't really know how to cope through it.
We, as a group, have created two peers, or, I'm sorry, multiple peer support groups for children going through a family situation, for example divorce, separation. Whether they have bad grades, behavioral issues, et cetera, we are, we could always be there to help. We have given these adolescents different coping techniques and strategies that they can use in their everyday life to help overcome the struggles. Although our support group is now a success, we did hit many bumps in the road. We have emails that weren't responded to. We had meeting delays. And our guidance counselor, Ms. Breeding, is the main one getting students to us. So if she's absent or sick, we wouldn't really have this group, and our meetings would be mostly, mainly canceled. In these support group meetings, what we, we have recently met with them, and we did yoga with them, and we, because yoga is calming. And we, we also do, we also give them, as Jack said, strategies to help them cope with the resulting effects of divorce. And, and in some cases, it may lead to an anxiety disorder or depression. I have anxiety disorder, so most of the tactics that I use can help with divorce. Some of the adolescents we work with have severe problems, and some of them need direct tactics or things to work with, and some of them I can provide, but not all.
Since divorce is such a prevalent problem, we decided to stretch out into the community via website and brochure. We started to reach out to the community with our brochure, which we passed out our first Friday and at the fair. We, two events that we both, we participated in, mainly to get our word out to the community. Our website includes the blog, which, our website includes our blog, which tells about our weekly meetings, the resources we have used for this project, and tips for parents and children alike. Originally, we only had a blog in, in which we, again, posted weekly updates on our support groups, but then assembled our website to cover even more about our group and what we have done.
We originally wanted to begin the group ACTED, because we realized that divorce is a, well, it's affecting many children and adults all across the county and kind of all across the world, basically. But as we did research, we discovered statistics such as about roughly half of all American children will experience their parents go through divorce before they become an adult and reach the age of 18. Of a survey we conducted earlier in the year, we only got 14 responses back, but just within our school, we got 14 responses back from teachers in our school, and they said that they altogether have roughly 100 students within just the 14. And then, and then, do you want to talk about divorce?
Since we have made it to international competition, we do have many future goals that we would, sorry, that we would like to accomplish before we go. We would like to get our own designated room to hold support group meetings.
We also want to make it so that every school in Flagler County has to have a support group, because we know that this, based on research, that this is going to affect every school, if not maybe every classroom even. So we want to make sure that every school has a safe place for these kids, like we have at our school.
We also want for the adolescents to be able to continue on our project, so that they can continue it on, and that they can help other students in the ways that we have helped them.
Okay. I would like to also thank you all for having us here. This is always a great experience for them to interview. When they go to internationals, they still have to present their project to a group of evaluators. They will also have a board display, their scrapbook, and a media presentation that they are to have in front of over 2,000 people and guests walking through, where they will present en masses their project, their goals for the future, and their accomplishments. And I think that they are fantastic, smart children that have a lot to give other people. And they, or I, neither one could be able to do any of this without the support of all of these wonderful parents and grandparents who also.[897.23][897.23](applause) Well, I just wanted to really say thank you. I spent some time over at your classroom talking about your project, and was so inspired and moved by everything you brought to the table as far as discussion and strategies. You will help and have an impact on literally thousands of students' lives within our community each and every day. So I admire your commitment. I admire the fact that you can come up here and speak so articulately about a project you not only created but are clearly passionate about. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna have everybody step this way. Okay, are we ready? All right. One, two, three. We're gonna get one more. One, two, three. Now, everybody look really happy.[981.44][981.44](applause) Thank you. Excellent job. Absolutely. No, good job, Dan. Okay. We'll now move to agenda item number nine, which is an ordinance. And I know before you read it, I have a quick question, because I think it would be pertinent to the conversation as we begin. After our workshop and our discussion therein, I had conversations in regards to our elected officials, our counterparts on the county. And some of the suggestions that they spoke of was creating some sort of language to address our concerns as far as not constructing on that site, if there is construction to occur, the sort of standards that we put forth within our city to make it contiguous to our neighboring residential communities. Is there anything that you would suggest as a resolution to that?
Sure, Mayor. As you, as the council's aware, in your agenda packet, there's a contraction report. And then these concerns are addressed in that report, in the paragraph under future land use and zoning. And this was what we discussed at the workshop last time, specifically having to do with what happens if there is vertical construction on this, on this site in the future. If it's in the city right now, it's going to be developed according to our development standards. Whereas if it's deannexed, in other words, we pass this contraction ordinance, then it would not otherwise be. It would be in the county and could be developed accordingly. There is certainly a methodology, and it's pretty straightforward. There's a lot of communities that do it. They enter into interlocal agreements, providing for certain areas within unincorporated areas, certain parcels within unincorporated areas to be, to be developed according to municipal development standards. Since this parcel has been in the city for some period of time, since, as I understand it from your comments, that there are no future plans for vertical development on this, on this parcel, I would imagine that would be something that would be available and would be acceptable to Flagler County to ensure the concerns that are expressed in this contraction report, which is a report that must be done by the City of Palm Coast in response to the petition from Flagler County for this, this contraction, this deannexation. I would, what I would suggest, bottom line, what I'd suggest is that this is something that can be crafted very quickly, and if, it would, it would be done between first and second reading. It can be done with the formality of an interlocal agreement, which would then have to be brought back to the, to the council and the commission of the governing bodies. You could do it such that the second reading of this contraction would, would then be called up after the approval of such an interlocal agreement. That would be the most formal way to do it. It would be the most enforceable way to do it.
So you, like, just so I understand the process, so approving this with the condition of coming back before second reading and having an interlocal agreement drafted and gone before the county commission for approval?
Yes, as opposed to, for example, adding a section in this, this contraction ordinance, in my opinion, my legal opinion, would not suffice, because it's not, it's not binding. It's not binding. It's not an agreement with Flagler County. This ordinance is an action, this contraction ordinance is just an action by this local government, by the, by the City of Palm Coast, and would not place any legal enforceable burden upon Flagler County if, in the event in the future, circumstances changed and construction were to occur in this parcel.
So it'd be similar to what we just approved with the roadway projects wherein they address the reverter clause?
Absolutely. The, the purpose and the philosophy would be identical.
But we're, we're not talking about the county following city ordinance, as we're talking about reverting the annexation.
Well, what we're, what I'm suggesting, there's, there's really two different things that we're discussing. The, the first is the agenda item this evening, which is an action, simply making this parcel not part of the city. Contract, we're contracting the municipal boundaries. But given the concerns about what could potentially happen, probably won't, but if it could, simply put, we want to make sure it's developed according to the city standards, which are, you know, they're more strict. They're, they're, they're gonna have development standards and appearance standards that, that we want in our, in our city. In order to accomplish that, what local governments do, it's very common, is that unincorporated jurisdictions agree that they will develop portions of their unincorporated land, usually at the boundaries and contiguous to municipal boundaries, according to those municipal development standards. And that is what I'm suggesting can be done to, to address the concerns in this contraction report, if the county is willing to do that, consistent with the representations that they've made, I assume, Mayor Holland, to you with regard to this issue.
And my understanding is because of the FAA and where it's located, that they can't build anything on this property. Is that, is that correct?
It is. They've definitely said they have no plans to. It is questionable that what's going to happen 10, 15, 20 years from now. And to say that it definitely won't happen based on facts today, things change. So this way, it would, if things change and there is any development, it would still be an unincorporated county, but it would address the concerns. The only, because it doesn't change ownership, it doesn't change, you know, there's no tax base, all those things. That's, that's not the issue. The issue is it's, it's in the middle of our city. We're surrounded. And how, and the county standards are different than ours. If they don't ever build, it's a non-issue.
Does this, oh, I'm sorry.
If, if, and they don't plan on it, but 20 years from now, who knows what will happen? In this way, it protects that if you don't have this kind of provision, then 20 years from now, the city has no say whatsoever as to what kind of development would go in there.
Now, how would this transfer if they were to sell this lot?
I, I would suggest in a local, which highly unlikely they're going to sell it, because it's, they're using FAA grant, or they used FAA grant dollars to, to purchase this, is my understanding, or state some, some kind of grant dollars. But you could state that if private development occurs, then it would have to be reannexed into the city if they sell it to a private company. And that way, the county property still would not be in the city, but any private property would be in the city. That's would be my suggestion.
Can I just bring that up? Because I was listening back to all the council members' discussion and concerns, and it really was just making sure that Seminole Woods residential areas, if that were to ever occur, that we would have a say-so and what that would look like. And in speaking with the county commissioners, they didn't see any issue with that, because it was their understanding as well that, you know, construction's not going to occur. So this is just a security in doing so. So I just thought I'd bring that up before the discussion.
As Mayor said, very, you know, and they've deeded park property over to us, that we have no plans to do anything but parks, they have the reversionary clause in there, because what's going to happen 20 years from now? It's the same concept.
So.
Would be my suggestion, Mayor, that if this is what the council would like, you can have one or two motions, and the motions would be for, for the ordinance, but also to direct staff to work with the county to prepare the appropriate interlocal agreement, and to bring back this ordinance on second reading upon the, the appropriate enactment and execution of the interlocal agreement.
So do we have so many certain days for the second reading occurs, or no?
Have we already advertised second reading?
Yes, it goes in May 3rd and May 10th.
Okay.
So we would just have to readvertise, but other than the readvertising, there is no, anything in our ordinance says how long before the second read?
Correct.
And that's, that's simple enough to do.
Without council direction, we would be bringing it back to you.
Sure.
The next, the next city council meeting.
Any council member want to just give their thoughts on that concept before we open up to?
I would like to open it to the public, and seeing that we have some county people here, maybe hear from them, because I, just my discussions with the county is what we just suggested was unheard of. So I want to, yeah, that was my, you know, so I want to know, I want to hear from them if they want to, I mean, obviously.
Well, if I could suggest, we go ahead and read, read, read the title and get a motion so we can open up to the public under, under the proper process of chapter 164, 166. Thank you. So, Mayor, council, with all that, here's the title to this ordinance for contraction. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, for the voluntary contraction or deannexation of the city boundary by deannexing 116.23 acres, more or less a real property known as Airport East, generally located south of State Road 100 and west of Seminole Woods Parkway, more particularly and legally described on Exhibit A, which is attached to the ordinance and fully incorporated in the ordinance by, by this reference. This ordinance provides for the amendment of the city boundaries to contract the subject property from the city boundaries for severability for conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Do we have a motion on this, and then a second for discussion? We can open up to the public. We don't have to take a vote on it. It just allows us to open it. There a motion on the ordinance?
I, I move that we approve the ordinance on first reading, subject to the requirement that prior to the second reading, staff come back to the council with an interlocal agreement acceptable to the county that would provide for guarantees that the property will remain vacant, and if it doesn't, that any private ownership of the property would either revert to the city or be subject to city development regulations if it's ever used for vertical development.
Sir a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll now open up to the public on agenda item number nine. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening, Mayor, council, Mr. Landon, Mr. Rajman. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. What you're proposing is something that your staff and county staff have already realized that we're going to have to do in accordance of Florida statutes 333. The city staff was kind enough to host a webinar where FAA is requiring us to do an airport protection zoning in a local agreement that I was working on, and I know that Adam was working on with some of your staff. They've had some preliminary discussion. And I have the basis for that, and even though I don't have the authorization to say whether or not the county commission will accept what you're saying, we are going to be bringing to you an interlocal agreement, again, in accordance with Florida statutes 333, three that's for airport protection zoning regulations. And as you may recall, again, under the request and funding from the City of Palm Coast, several years ago, a airport area master plan was approved, and we've been operating under the guise of coordinating on development. So that's why I was very surprised by the developments that have occurred so far, because we have been working with city staff on any development activities. Again, I may remind you that the reason why we brought for this action is because we were purchasing property, and you're absolutely correct, we received $1.9 million from FAA to purchase this problem, and it all happened because as a tractor supply facility was being developed in the city, we voiced concerns about the fact that it was going to impede our instrument landing system that was going to be developed in the future. But unfortunately, the city staff felt their hands were tied, and they couldn't encourage the developer to shift the building slightly to not do that impediment. So that's why we started. So that's why we started pursuing funding to secure some of these properties around the airport so that we can ensure that it's not going to do several things. Now, this particular property that we're talking about is in the runway protection zone, and under federal guidelines with FAA, that requires that we keep it object-free and activity-free. So there is no proposal to develop on the property in the future. Our goal is to continue to be friendly community, or friendly airport to our communities that have developed around the airport, and we have an open-door policy where if there are any concerns, that we address them as quickly as possible and also be an information piece to the city and to the citizens surrounding the airport.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Donald O'Brien, County Commissioner. Obviously, I only speak for myself and not the rest of my fellow commissioners, but the process that Mr. Reichman laid out seems very logical to me, and I would be fully supportive of that process, and I'm getting that same kind of feedback from county staff. So I would obviously leave it to the two staffs to work it out, but I think, you know, hopefully we can move this forward as you've outlined, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Dave Sullivan, County Commissioner. I wanted to just rise to support what we've just heard, and I think it will work out fine for the future.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Jack Kyle, Palm Coast. You, I note that you refer to the future. I don't, well, I don't know if you're still going to be on the council in 20 years from now, but, well, I might be here, so it makes no difference. But the point here is, if it's another council, they can override what you're doing now, anyway. So let's stick to the present, you know, and what we do today may be good for the future, may not be good for the future. Nobody on this council can foretell what's going to happen. So let's work just now, and I approve it. I think you should, you know, make the switch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Close public comment. Just like to reiterate and thank our county staff for being here this evening, as well as Commissioner O'Brien and Commissioner Sullivan for their comments. And you're absolutely right, Jack, what we do today does affect every single thing in the future, so councils could override it. But it's a protection that we clearly feel we owe the citizens to Seminole Woods, that they rely on our decisions today that will impact their future. I'll take it back to this council. Any additional comments, or I'll call the question?
Just one comment. On Jack's comments also, what we're doing is giving future councils an option. If we don't, then we're locking their hands and they won't be able, so we are thinking that way, looking today, but making sure future councils can make their own decisions, you know, based on, you know, the residents then and that, so.
Yep. Okay. All the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to resolutions. Agenda Item Number 10, a resolution approving a contract with Sabunji Construction Incorporated in the amount of $976,710, including a 5% contingency for the construction of restrooms.
Mayor, if you could read the next item to our presentation, actually includes both of them.
A resolution, Agenda Item Number 11, which is a resolution approving a contract with Amgay Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $547,050, including a 5% contingency for the construction of sports field lighting.
Good evening. These two items are in our capital improvement plan for this year. They are items that, two of them are at Indian Trail Sports Complex, and the other one is at the restroom for the new facility here in the town center area being built by the Art Foundation. Carl will give you the details.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Carl Cody, Construction Engineering Division. I have before you tonight a presentation on the three projects that were mentioned, and I'm going to start off by going over Indian Trail Sports Complex. In addition to the projects before you this evening, we have some other projects at this facility that have been completed or will be upcoming. We have the restroom facility, which is the design and construction of a new restroom facility in this year's budget. We also have the additional field lighting project for fields five, six, and seven. Field number four, we are looking to have sod replacement and underdrain system installed over the summer. And the last project was already completed, it's the replacement of the dugouts at the baseball field. This here is a map, kind of indicating the areas of the projects. We have the area at the baseball fields for the dugouts, the first field on the right at the sports complex that will be rehabbed over the summer, and then the two locations on the school site, the large field area that will receive sports lighting, and adjacent to it is the proposed restroom facility. This here is the field area requiring additional lighting. You can see the lighting is around the perimeter of the fields, leaving the area wide open for multiple field arrangements. This here are some conceptual depictions of the restroom, proposed restroom facility. It's the area in pink that is shaded on the site plan, is adjacent to an existing covered pavilion area that's used as kind of a headquarters for tournaments and whatnot. It's kind of centralized on the school site between all the fields that are at that facility. Above it are a couple elevations of what the building will look like. The style is look to match the existing school building, it'll be a brick facade with a metal roof and some banding, very similar appearance to the school. And then the floor plan, it basically consists of a women's restroom, a men's restroom, a single-style family restroom, and some ancillary spaces to support the building. Now we'll move over to the town center facility. This is city-owned property. There's a lease agreement the city has with the Palm Coast Arts Foundation. The Arts Foundation has gone ahead and constructed the first phase of improvements at the site of an event lawn and a performance stage. The proposed restroom facility will serve the general public and the event area. This here is the ultimate master plan by the Arts Foundation depicting all the improvements on the site. The area in pink are the proposed restroom facilities, and I have a block coming up that shows more clearly where they're located. This here is what's existing out there now, the event lawn, and then the stage area. So directly behind the stage area will be two restroom facilities that will be identical. And these are just some elevations and floor planes of the two facilities, very similar to the one at the sports complex. There'll be a women's room, a men's room, and a family room as well. The style of the building is going to have a flat roof, it's got some arches, it blends in. We worked with the Arts Foundation on fitting this into their ultimate build-out. They'll be actually encapsulating these restrooms into their building, so these will remain as they develop the site, and they'll just build around them. Funding for the proposed projects for the restrooms comes from the Recreation Impact Fee Fund, and the lighting project comes from the capital funds. So before you tonight, council action to approve a contract with Sabunji Construction, just over $930,000, as well as a contingency, just over $46,000 for the restroom projects, as well as a contract in $521,000 for the sports lighting with Amgay Constructors, and a contingency just over $26,000.
Funding was for Indian Trail Sports Complex was a $150,000 TDC grant, so it is our tourist dollars, our bed tax, is also going towards helping this, because our Indian Trail Sports Complex is one of the largest draws for visitors here every year, and the demand for those fields go up every year, our numbers continue to climb each year. So this is a way of reinvesting back into the tourist market here in Palm Coast.
Council, any questions or discussion on the site?
I did want to say, and I think it's important for people to know, that we didn't just decide to do these lights overnight, that this was something that we had years of people, actually as Alex was coming on and Luanne was leaving, we had people complaining that they couldn't get use of the fields, and there was too many teams, which is great for Palm Coast, and we all wanted to use them at the same time. So this gave us more options. And a lot of that money, I believe, is infrastructure, going in and bringing infrastructure into the restrooms, not just the building itself.
Correct.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nobile?
Yes. So just some questions on clarification of funding. So the ITS lighting, restrooms, we'll bring up the wallet. I prefer to think of it as a debt. So greetings, Chris. So the funding for the restrooms.
Yes, sir.
Where's that coming from?
That's coming from our Recreation Impact Fees, which are restricted for use for recreational construction or capacity improvements.
Okay, now who sets the impact fee, level of fee for that?
The fee, the actual amount of the fee is based on a study, and ultimately is set by city council, the amount of the fee. The rules that regulate how impact fees are used are from state statutes.
Okay. And now the funds for the lighting in the field?
The lighting funds come from our Capital Projects Fund, which is primarily funded through the small county surtax, which is a portion of the sales taxes here in Flagler County. That small county surtax is driven by the Flagler County ordinance that created it, and again, its primary use is for infrastructure and construction-type projects within the city.
Okay. Thank you.
And Chris, can you tell, I'm sorry, go ahead. Can you tell me around how much those fields bring into us? Like, do we have a figure of how much we actually have come in through the economy from that?
Unfortunately, there's no way to tell specifically, right down to the penny, how much money that we get from the fields, but it's in the, I think, over $5 million a year was the last number that I've seen, that it generates an economic activity. You have to remember that visitors are coming here, they're buying gas, they're buying food at our restaurants, they're employing local employees, maybe they'll buy a house here eventually. In addition to staying at the hotels, all of that has a significant impact on the economy here locally.
Well, and I can speak to that a little bit, because I know I requested that information when I was talking to TDC about changing our policies to ask for additional dollars. And with the expansion of the fields in the last few years, the tournament play has increased substantially. You can really see a direct correlation, yes.
Can I get a guesstimate on what it would cost to develop, at this point, a new field? Carl? Just a, I mean, give me, I'm not holding you to it until the next meeting, but, you know.
You know, you're talking a lighted field on a blank site.
Just another field. So instead of lighting a field, adding a field somewhere.
To add a field? Between, just between the sod and irrigation, you're going to be over $100,000 at a minimum.
At the Indian Trail site?
Well, we don't have any room in Indian Trail.
Don't have any trails, so we have to find another location.
So it would have to be the other place that we do have, it would be our site on US-1. But once again, then you got to build the other infrastructure of restrooms and the like.
Right, and all that, yeah. So we're looking at a lot of money.
Yes. To develop that, Carl, were you in the $3 to $5 million range for developing another complex?
Up in, the one up in US-1?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's what I was saying, and I'm sorry for these questions, they'll make sense, I think, maybe later in the meeting. I'm just trying to get the information now. Now, an important point, too, that call made, was I want everybody aware of, is the Arts Foundation, we're not building bathrooms on private property. We own that property, and we lease it to the Arts Foundation, so we're not building, and we will have access to them on special occasions, you know, if we have special needs, things like that. So we will have access to those bathrooms.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open up to the public. Any member of public which may comment on Agenda Item Number 10? Make 11, please do so.
I'm checking, just to, in order to make sure this is in Palm Coast, but I'm reading some of the newspapers. The question on the Arts Foundation is, how much are we leasing the property to the foundation for on a yearly basis?
We'll answer your question after your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. If we're leasing it, and who's building the building over there? Is the Arts Foundation responsible for that, or is the city building that? And if the Arts Foundation is the one that's building the building, then the Arts Foundation should be the one building the bathrooms. There are a lot of other places in Palm Coast that could use bathrooms on a daily basis. One would be on the walking trail toward, on the intercoastal, just under the bridge. You could use one down there, okay? If this is only going to be used sporadically, I think it's a waste of the city council's, the city's money to do so, okay? If the Arts Foundation wants a bathroom there, and if they have a lease on this property, I don't know, 50 years, 100 years, whatever they got on it, for a fixed amount, where does the money, the Arts Foundation, when it comes in, where does that money go? What's that used for? Just the Arts Foundation? Is it used for trips? What's it used for? I don't know. So my question is, is, if you've got my questions there, maybe you can answer those questions.
Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Charles Ebert. What I'm inquiring about mostly is, since the resolution is not separating the lighting from the restrooms in the art area, we're going to light Indian Trails, but we're also going to build restrooms on the art leased property on the same price. Why don't we have a separate bill for lighting Indian Trails and separating the bathrooms for the art? Now, I'm in favor for lighting Indian Trails, okay? Indian Trails has brought in a lot of money, a lot of universities, a lot of tournaments, everything else, and we've already exhausted that area. And then the next place we got to move to is US-1, and that's still incorporated where there's nothing out there close enough to us. So that makes sense, the light, that fields. But adding that on to the same part of the Art Foundation, you know, we read things about what the Art Foundation is doing to that area, and they're flipping the bill for it, but now they want us to flip the bill for us to build the restrooms for them? I am not in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Unless I've read this resolution incorrectly, it just basically says that we want to spend $976,710 for the construction of restrooms. It doesn't say anything else about irrigation or lighting, it just says restrooms. How many restrooms are we going to build for $976,000? And are the, according to this gentleman here, I counted only 10 between the two sites, I'm sorry, six or seven between the two sites, and I didn't hear any restrooms for either physically handicapped, accessible, or what. But I'd like to know how many restrooms, because that's what you're asking us to spend, $976,000 for just bathrooms. Now, they got to be awful big and awful expensive for $976,000 just for a bathroom. Now, they got to be awful big and awful expensive for $976,000 just for a bathroom.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Many, well, not many, but several years back, the Art League came up before the city council and says, if you give us the land, we'll build the property, we'll build it up. They didn't say that we want you to build this, or we want you to build that. This is all their responsibility. They, you're going to put restrooms, it should be their responsibility to pay for it. They offered it, they made the commitment, and now all of a sudden, the city is trying to take over little by little, and then eventually we're going to be building the whole thing for the Art League. They said that if you gave them the money, they would raise, if you gave them the property, they would raise the money. And they said that they would easily raise a million dollars. I never yet heard them say that they raised a million dollars. I haven't even, I never even heard them say they raised any money. But I object wholeheartedly to spending money to put toilets for the, for the Art League.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, council members, my name is Mike Cochiola from Palm Coast. Now, when I think of lighting, the way your presentation was made, I think of lighting for ball fields and lighting for Palm Coast. And I know everything has priority, and I know everything has value. But then I ask, is the value of potential, possible additional revenues from a lighted ball field of greater value, of greater priority than lighting up Palm Coast for its citizens? And I'll tell you why. I'm called upon frequently to drive in the early morning hours and after dark. And I know driving through neighborhoods in Palm Coast in the early morning hours, I drive down the middle of the road because on both sides are kids walking to bus stops or bicycling, or people out walking, or people walking dogs. And they're doing the same thing at night. You cannot see them in a lot of, on a lot of city streets. Now, I don't know, I don't know about the rest of you, but for me and perhaps people back here, my night vision isn't quite what it used to be. So I asked the city council, I know lighting for ball fields is good, but have you considered the priority of lighting for ball fields versus lighting Palm Coast? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Holland, Honorable Vice Mayor Nobile, honorable council members. My name is Ed Fuller, proud resident of Palm Coast. Last gentleman kind of echoed a little bit what I want to talk about, and it's about public safety that you're all aware of, and you all do a good job at. And one of the pillars of public safety is lighting. And I'm glad to see that we're going to get lights for that field. That's, that's a great idea. But I'd like to know where we're at with the lighting for the corridors, you know, inside our city. You have a lighting program here, I see, where if you want to apply for, you know, a light, you can have it at an intersection. That's all on good, but what about the street that you walk up to that intersection where the kids have to walk? That's not lighted. That's not addressing the issue. And I don't want to contravene the issues and I want to commingle them, but it seems to me that it's, it's one, how the kids get there is just as important as one that get there, I guess, for the, for the lighting purposes. And public safety is, is a paramount to the city council. So I'm just saying, redirect possibly or refocus, you know, because it's one of those deals, those are capital dollars. I don't know what a light pole costs, it may not cost us anything, maybe the FPL will put them up, but there's an operating cost, I'm sure to that. So where are we at with this program as far as looking at the lighting needs for the city of Palm Coast? Are the corridors going to be covered? Will they be covered? Because if they're not, it's going to be, it's, it's, it's not going to address the issue of the safety. Additional law enforcement officers, apparently Sheriff Staley, he said he was designate five officers, I guess, for traffic. So he's already noticed, I mean, that you all know, we all see, unfortunately, we had fatalities here. And I'm not, it's just, when you have safety or security and public safety, there's a combination, it's not just one panacea. It's also education. Or, you know, you don't wear black when you're walking your dog, you know, it's like you have to wear illuminated colors or you have some type of lighting fixture. And I'm not saying this council is ignoring that. I'm just saying, needs to redirect, and where are we at with this, I guess, this assessing of the lighting in the Palm Coast? And are the corridors going to be covered? I think the intersections is a great idea, but it's only one step. So I'm glad the kids are going to have lighting, I think it's a great idea, but the kids that don't use the baseball fields, what about those kids? And I would say you're ignoring them, I'm not. I'm just saying, please look at that, and if that assessment can be accelerated, I would appreciate that as a citizen because the lights don't go out here at 5:00 at night. We are an outdoor community, and it's, it's certainly designed that way. And the lighting is an integral part of the safety of our citizens, and I know you all take that very seriously. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
No, are we questioning, are we talking about resolution number 10 or 11?
Both.
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 So you get it twice?
If you'd like, Mr. McDonald.
John Brady, Palm Coast. I echo the sentiments of the last two speakers. I want to point out to city council, you did a survey, citizen survey, and as I recall, the number one thing was lighting Palm Coast. You had students from Metansus High School who came in and gave you a plan. I would like to know if FPL has been involved in solving this problem, number one. Number two, money was found to build this building and the building next door. I find it incredible that money cannot be found to put in one light. Thank you.
Next speaker. Close public comment. We'll address the speakers one by one, and then we'll take it back to this council. As far as the first speaker, the lease of the facility, Mr. Linnick, can you speak to the relationship with the Arts Foundation?
I'm going to need to defer to Beau who handled that, those lease terms.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The lease agreement was structured through a public-private partnership. And so what typically that means is, in a lot of communities, cities will build arts complexes themselves. I think Orem and Beach has a performing arts center. In this instance, the lease arrangement with the Arts Foundation was, they would be constructing the facilities there, and they did raise money through grants, and maybe their representatives can speak to that. And the lease agreement is a no-fee lease agreement because the property was designated. The only thing we can use the property for is a cultural arts facility, that's what it's supposed to be used for. So instead, the city developing that project on its own, and entered into this public-private partnership to bring the private dollars and their ability to go out and get grants of different natures to construct this facility.
And they just built a brand-new stage that's housed on that facility site. So, I mean, they did raise substantial money to do so. They, they received a state grant in the excess of $500,000, in which the county partnered with the TDC funds and the city partnered, so, and they're continuing to raise funds as far as raising the roof with a very strategic campaign. So as far as that relationship, that's been a longstanding relationship with the city of council, understanding that to have a well-rounded community, we make investments, diverse investments, and arts is certainly part of what our residents have come to expect and deserve. I don't want to go into all the exchanges. So Mr. Charles Ebert, light and restroom. Want to speak to the fact that lights and restroom are separate?
Yes, we, once again, one contract is for the restrooms. And yes, we went out to bid for both sites under one bid because you're going to get a better price that way. And then we have a separate contract for just the lighting, and that's why you have two separate actual agenda items. So we did not separate out the restrooms, but we, as far as the two separate sites, but we did separate the lighting from the restrooms. You can approve one resolution, or both resolutions, or neither resolution, the way it's presented to you tonight.
And so as far as Robert McDonald comments about irrigation, how many restrooms, handicap accessible, those are all mandatory requirements.
Right. You know, the number of restrooms is, it's, you could say three buildings because at the, at the arts facility, it's, the boys and the girls are separated. At the Indian Trail Sports Complex, it's, it's under one building. Always meet ADA at this point, I mean, that's just the law, and that will happen. Carl can tell you how many stalls at each one of them? That was the question?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have MRIs, but there's, the very large restrooms are numerous stalls in each one. Each one has a single-user restroom, but the men's side maybe have at least half a dozen, and the women's has, has more than that. And it does include other infrastructure, the irrigation, you know, utility connections to the building. It's a project itself, it's just not restrooms, it's an entire project.
And as far as Jack's comments about when the Art Foundation came, and I believe I addressed those, as far as how much they've raised, they have raised substantial amounts of money, they have built a stage, they have gone through Phase 1 and continue to get grants. I think they're in for another state grant now. Lighting of Palm Coast and darkness, both Mike and Ed Fuller's comments about prioritizing education program. We recently had partnered with students within the city of Palm Coast, Metansus, to readdress our lighting scenario. I know that we have allocated $100,000 to hire a consultant to do a feasibility study within this year's budget to progress strategically on where those areas are going to be located. And there does come a cost to the operation. There's currently 2,100 streetlights in Palm Coast. Palm Coast has not ignored the fact that we've put in streetlights at a cost of $700,000 a year to annually operate. So every time we do make decisions about streetlights, there is an operational cost that goes along with that. So we're always mindful of those costs, and we try to balance those costs. But I don't think there's a single person on this council that has not made this a priority and has not strongly suggested to our staff that within this year, or we want to see substantial improvements made on our streetlights and sidewalks, as well as we have many sidewalks. And I will say, as part of safety, the first thing the city council did when they created a sidewalk program was they sat down with the school district, and the first initial stage, which they accomplished, was safety to schools. And so that's why you see a sidewalk to schools in our community today, is because they did address the issue very early on of safety to schools first, then they took it to other areas of our community, and we're continuing to build those. So that's been a longstanding project. And as with everything, you know, budget times, we discuss these issues as a council, and I think this council's been very unified on their mission to create those programs and move forward aggressively. These are different also when we look at different pockets of funds, this is very complex, and we're talking about where one bucket comes from, another bucket comes from partnerships with TDC, those kind of funds, private partnerships, these are not unilateral programs. And as far as FPNL solving problem, money was not found. I don't think we ever find money. We budget accordingly, we have a very strong capital improvement plan that we have five and 10 years out that is public, that the public is more than accessible to these items. And we have many discussions publicly about these issues. And so if you want to address if FPNL will be included on the discussions as far as the street lighting?
Yes, because the streetlights are actually installed, owned, and maintained by FPNL. What they do is every time we request a streetlight or a series of streetlights on our major thoroughfare, is they then send us the bill. And every streetlight that goes up increases our electric bill for those. But, so with that, yes, we can't do anything without, well, I mean, I guess we could start our own, put up our own poles, et cetera, but the poles out there today are FPNL poles, and that's why it makes sense that they just put the lights on those poles versus us duplicating poles. So yes, they're very much involved in the whole conversation. And, and when we do that, it's, for the most part, there's very little capital dollars, it is operating dollars. It's, you know, same dollars we use for, in the general fund for day-to-day operations.
Yeah. Okay. Any further council comments or questions?
I do. And it's with the lighting, and I know you just gave a lot of explanation, but because it's, it's not only the email I get every single day, but it's what I read in the paper every single day. And I think we need to make it clear that when Mayor Nets was here and we had done the survey two years ago, we found that lighting was one of the big issues. And he made it very clear that he wanted the streets lit up, and he wanted to get the lighting done. We had put it into the Strategic Action Plan, and it started, but it never really made it through to the next, what it had to do to get into the actual budget. The following year, council had again put it as a priority, it did make it through, we actually did a paper ballot, and four of the five of us had agreed that we were going to get it into the Strategic Action Plan, it was a priority at city council. From what I understand, meeting with Chris Quinn, that we do have the money there that was started with the program to get the lighting going, and it is in progress. And once the, the design is done, we can start getting the lighting on there. The money that it's an ongoing expense can be taken from, the more houses that we're building this year is more money coming in, and that is the money, the funds that we could use to do the lighting. So I know we still have to vote on that, where the lighting would be and what streets would be a priority. But it's, it's happening, and it's not something that we're not looking at. I think, I think we're in there bothering Chris all the time, saying, where can the money come from? We want it done. And we see that it's happening, and we see that it's, it's something that probably by the end of this year, we'll have a design, and we can get that lighting started. So it's, it's definitely out there, and it's definitely happening. And with the Arts Foundation, it is something that we lease, that we lease to them, but if you look at the money that a place like Jacksonville brings in with the arts they have there, and what you bring in for culture into your, into your neighborhood, I think it's a benefit for us. And even as far as graduation, we know, we go all the way to Daytona for our kids to graduate, and there's something that we could use, and those restrooms would be able to be used by the people here in Palm Coast.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve agenda items 10 and 11.
For a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, call to question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you for your comments. We'll now move to agenda item number 12, which is a resolution approving a contract with Diamond Towers LLC for wireless telecommunication consulting to improve the wireless coverage throughout the city of Palm Coast.
Mayor?
I guess so. I'm watching everyone leave.
Do we need to take a break?
No.
No.
My eyes start turning yellow, yes.
We'll pause.
Okay, good.
Mayor, City Council, over a year ago, almost two years ago now, another priority of city council was to look into how we could improve cell service here in Palm Coast. We don't actually provide cell service, obviously. You, either you have to go to one of the carriers or the providers, but we, city actually owns some cell towers on our property. We also have some land leases where we have private companies leasing property and building towers. Those are just on city property. We also have numerous other towers that are on other sites, private property, throughout Palm Coast and Flagler County. But we all experience those dead zones, those dreaded areas where you're, you go visit somebody in their house and it doesn't work, or you're in some place where all of a sudden doesn't work. And yet, I, I know I- somebody in their house, and it doesn't work, or you're in some place where all of a sudden doesn't work. And yet, I know I have a dead zone that's close to the tennis center, and yet we have a cell tower at the tennis center. Every time I do that, I go, why can't they just add the antennas to that tennis center? Pole that we have there, that still has room for additional towers. So with this, we put together a little team, and this wasn't a technical team as much as it was a marketing team, and tried to say, okay, how can we market Palm Coast better to get the handful of providers to come and put more antennas up and improve service here in Palm Coast? And they did some research and went through the process of trying to find out what other cities do. There are a lot of private companies out there that are involved in this, and put out a request for proposals. They received a handful of requests. The first company, their first top choice, we sat down and negotiated. Debbie was frustrated many times because lots of times they wouldn't return calls. And then eventually, we got real close to reaching agreement with the people that they were negotiating with, and they then said, well, took it up corporate, and corporate came back and says, no, this really doesn't match our priorities here at business plan at this time, and gave us a very vague reason why they've decided to withdraw. So the team got back together and said, we had another top contender, someone we were also very, very interested in, the second-ranked company, and that's Diamond Communications. So we started the process of working with Diamond. Well, you talk about a different attitude. Diamond was working very nicely with us and closely with us, and we were able to work out a contract. That contract is what's in front of you today, tonight, and Debbie's going to get into the details as to some of the provisions of the contract, and why we think this would be a good thing for our community, once again, to basically promote our community and see if we can get better cell service. So Debbie, with that, if you'll take it from here.
Sure. Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Debbie Streichsberg, and I'm a member of the Fiber and Cell Tower Team. With me is team member Don Trager, and from Diamond Communications, we have Dan Turnpaugh. He'll be able to answer any technical questions you may have. We're here to discuss the opportunity to improve the level of wireless service in our community. Cell coverage proves to be the weak link in the communication chain. Council recognized this and made it a priority to find a resolution. City management assembled a team dedicated to enhancing cell coverage in our community. We're going to start by providing a brief background behind the FACT team, why we feel the need to engage technical experts, and a little bit about the process that brought us here today. The FACT team is a diverse group of employees with different professional backgrounds that meet biweekly to discuss methods to achieve its mission of enhancing cell coverage in our community. The team was established as city management's response to accomplish Council Goals Two and Goal Three. Goal Two is to develop and maintain a strong economy, and Goal Three is to leverage financial strengths while delivering value-added services to residents and businesses. On the left side, the city leases the property for the towers at Indian Trail Sports Complex in Frida Zamba Pool. American Towers is anticipated to build a tower on city-leased property at Water Treatment Plant One. On the right side, the city owns the three towers, as noted on the map, A1A Water Tank, Ralph Carter Park, and Palm Coast Tennis Center. Each tower has at least one carrier, with the water tank having three carriers. Here we have the expected revenue that the existing towers will generate for fiscal year 2017. City leases totaling over $83,000, not including the American Tower lease at Water Treatment Plant One, and the city-owned towers generating a total of over $203,000. Although the groundwork was set, the FACT team realized the opportunity to grow in a phased and controlled manner in order to keep pace with the current industry. Due to lack of expertise in a highly technical and heavily regulated industry, the FACT team decided to engage technical experts to develop and implement a wireless master plan through evaluating assets, enhancing service, expanding resources, and exploring opportunities. We received five respondents to the request for proposal. The evaluation team met and ranked all five proposals. A second evaluation process was to rank presentations from the top three respondents. Team narrowed it down to the top two contenders. The FACT team began negotiations with a selected vendor that decided to withdraw from the process. The vendor was actively monitoring the market landscape during negotiations, and although they determined a need, they felt it did not make sense for them to move forward at that time. City of Palm Coast recently completed negotiations with Diamond Communications, a full-service wireless infrastructure provider. Diamond Communications is a fast-growing tower infrastructure company and experienced in all aspects of the tower business. They stand as a leader in the field and one of the largest private tower companies in the United States. Diamond manages over 1,000 installations across 41 states, and they market over 200,000 sites across 50 states for colocation on behalf of third-party owners. Scope of work is broken up into two phases. Phase One is the marketing and development plan. During this phase, city ordinances will be reviewed and updated. Diamond will map the city's current facilities' coverage and identify potential sites. They will develop a wireless master plan that will provide a build-out strategy and an implementation timeline. Diamond will also develop a maintenance program for all city-owned towers. Phase Two is the implementation phase. Diamond will execute a marketing plan in order to lease additional carriers on existing towers, as well as build additional towers on sites determined by the wireless master plan. They will prepare and execute lease agreements, and manage and oversee the maintenance of all city-owned wireless communication facilities. Pricing will be in the form of revenue sharing. On the existing city-owned towers, the city will retain 100% of revenue on all current leases. Diamond will receive revenue sharing from new leases and modifications to existing leases. New carriers on existing city-owned towers, the city will receive 65% of the revenue generated. Modifications to existing city leases, the city will receive 75% of the new revenue generated. At the start of construction for each new facility, Diamond will pay the city $25,000. The city will receive 40% revenue on all new facilities built by Diamond. The FACT team did find this pricing to be comparable to this industry. The terms of the contract with Diamond Communications is five years with an automatic renewal for three successive years, for three successive five-year terms for a total of 20 years. The leases and revenue sharing will term in 25 years. Now I'll address the second resolution. Proposed resolution is provide notice that the city is developing an ordinance. Any applications will be subject to amendments in progress, and will coordinate timing with the consultant and work with any applicants. So the FACT team recommends council to approve the resolution to execute the contract to engage Diamond Communications, as well as adopt the proposed resolution to recognize and confirm the city has legislation in progress regarding wireless communication facilities and telecommunication towers and antennas in the public right-of-way.
Can, when we talk about existing contracts, and then renegotiating them, is there any threshold as to, what if they renegotiate it and we're getting less money? They're still going to get 25%?
Well, we're, you get, they would negotiate something where we get less money?
Well, with an existing, with an existing contract.
Yeah, they don't have any authorization to do that. This would be that if the provider wanted to upgrade the equipment, additional equipment, et cetera, that they would...
And the 25, or the split would then be on the new?
Everything new, yes.
Okay, because that's not kind of how that read there in the slide. It just sounded like as soon as it was renegotiated, they got 25%.
Okay, well, that's, that's what, all existing contracts, all existing money that we have right now with the carriers, 100% of it, the city maintains.
End of story. So any additional they bring on with the...
See, this is, the nice thing about this is that they make zero money on the master plan, they make zero money on helping us update our ordinances, and, and work with us in trying to address the industry today. Where they will make money is if they are able to bring a carrier to the table and put additional antennas up.
Got you.
So all the other upfront work, they do to market Palm Coast. And then if they're successful in marketing, then we get the revenue.
Okay. I just was, I remember talking about it last week, but that, I ate since then.
Mr. Nemeal, that's specifically provided for in the contract on page five, section two, where it says that the consultant will not share in revenue from existing city facility leases, they only get 25% of the increased recurring revenue. So it's spelled out real clearly in the contract.
Yes, please. Okay, so, mayor, council, I would like to take this opportunity to explain to you the change of environment that is about to happen in the cellphone and wireless industry. Our manager hasn't spoken about Senate Bill 596, which essentially preempts all of our rights to delegate where these microcell towers are going to be put in our right-of-way. Now, Senate Bill 596 passed, it's on the governor's desk now to be signed, it could be signed actually by now if it's eight o'clock, but it passed 300 to three, so we can rest assured that it's going to pass. Now, I'm going to explain what this bill actually does and how it's going to impact our future here in Palm Coast, and the opportunities that it's going to provide us. Senate Bill 596 is essentially the result of years of cities saying, we don't want your towers in our city because of our ordinances. We have very strict ordinances, they can't just put private cellphone towers anywhere in Palm Coast. Senate Bill 596, it really pays attention to microcell tower infrastructure, small cell towers, DAS systems, which are distributed antenna systems, representative of microcell towers, these are the things that are attached to telephone poles in such an array that they're about 100 meters apart, and they spread all throughout the city. Now, this is going to happen whether we like it or not, because it is going to be signed by the governor. The League of Cities agrees on it, and they are even part of the amendments where we as a city are allowed to charge a maximum of $150 per installation of this equipment on our infrastructure, so our tower, not our towers, our light poles, our streetlights, anything that the city owns and they want to install equipment on it, the maximum we can charge is $150. Now, they're going to do this whether we like it or not. Now, on page...
Wait a minute, when you say "they," who's "they"?
The carriers, AT&amp;T, Verizon...
So the carriers are going to implement this, whether we like it or not?
Correct.
Regardless of the cost of the infrastructure to do so?
Yep.
Which may be why they're not signing up right now, because they know this is about to happen.
This is going to happen literally today or tomorrow. Now, there's also an interesting note here on page 13 of 19 of Senate Bill 596 that says, "An authority may not enter into an exclusive arrangement with any person for the right to attach equipment to authority utility poles." What that means is that this exclusivity clause and all of the right of first refusals that we have in this current contract with Diamond Communications would not be able to be fulfilled if this was in front of us after tomorrow or the next day, whenever this bill actually becomes signed. Why is that important? Because we are in a very, very, very rich opportunity in time where we can take advantage of this. Historically, we have always said, we do not want your towers in our city, and that's why we don't have good cellphone service here. But I don't blame them, these towers are huge, they're tall, they're ugly. But, right now, so last week, Mr. Landon said that he couldn't get in touch with the correct people to facilitate the communications so that we could do this on our own. So I tweeted all of the carriers, and I was put in touch with all of the government affairs directors for each of the four major telecommunications companies. They are going to invest billions of dollars into Florida in the upcoming months. Where do we have an opportunity to maximize what they're about to distribute onto our system? So I'm going to tell you how this will work, and this isn't me, this is the telecommunications companies and the Senate Bill 596. They're going to come to the cities and say, hey, can we put our stuff on your poles? Or can we install a pole on this public right-of-way? We have the opportunity to say no, because it's a public safety risk. That's the only opportunity we have. So we can say, the weight on top is going to sway the pole, the line-of-sight issue, we still have ways to be a pain in the butt to these carriers, that's not what we should do at this moment. Microcell tower companies have already approached the city, and we have just been in the negative this entire time. Now, making the additional amendment puts two steps between, as a cellphone carrier such as AT&amp;T, being able to directly put their poles in our city wherever they want, which would improve our cellphone service. They're going to come to us and say, okay, you have contracts with Diamond and an amendment that you already have legislation in progress, that's great, we're either going to spend legal fees to fight that, and it will be nullified because that is what the Senate Bill 596 allows, or we're going to do it ourselves. We do not want that relationship. What we want is for these people to come to us, and we say, these are the poles that we want you to put your equipment on, and we're going to charge you $150 for that equipment, and then we're going to build streetlights with it. That's what we should do. And on top of that, what we should do is try to facilitate all of the new poles that they need to implement, they need to be strategically placed 100 meters apart. What we should do is say, all the poles that are going to be built, we want to work with you. AT&amp;T has a team called the WAM team, W-A-M. They are a government affairs, community outreach program to try to identify communities that want to be the first to get in this program. These DAS deployments are going to happen, so let's be on the pioneer list with these people to say, hey, guess what? The first carrier that comes to us that wants to install additional poles for their infrastructure where we can't help you, and we're not going to be a pain in the butt, because that has been our point of view in the past, but it needs to change, because this is going to happen one way or another, the first carrier that comes to us and says, we're going to build our additional poles, but we'll also put a light on top of it, we say, you are the people who get to come here first. We can change the whole perspective of our approach with cellular communications, because the tall tower infrastructure, we are moving away from it. There are not going to be tall tower installs any longer. It's all going to be 5G data transmission from point to point. This is an opportunity where we can take a step back, table this issue, and wait for these carriers to come to us, or reach out to their government affairs directors.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Because I forgot, I had one question, I forgot, so I got this one.
I can keep talking.
Just wait, give me, give me six seconds.
Sure.
Something you just said.
Government affairs officials, the poles.
So if they put a light on the pole, what does that do for us?
It lights our streets.
But who pays for it?
So...
I mean, right now, we can get a light put up for nothing.
But if we, but if we work with them, we can charge $150 per year per installation on our equipment. So we can use that money that we're charging them to attach...
$150 a year?
Yep, but there's going to be thousands of...
But they put a light up, and then, but we're still paying the light bill.
Well, we can use the $150 that we recoup, because we allow them to put their infrastructure on our stuff, and invest that to build lights. Or negotiate with a company and say, hey, you want preference to come here first, then all these additional poles that you have to build because we don't...
And let me tell you where I'm scared about that. Because I'm thinking budgets, because the wallet is nearby, and I'm thinking, so now we got a, we got a maintenance scenario, because if we own the poles, we have to do the maintenance.
Of the equipment?
No, the poles.
Which, if we own, well...
Well, if we own the poles...
We're not going to build new poles.
What are we going to do?
So they're coming to us, and they're either going to use our poles, or they're going to build one right next to it. But we're not going to build any poles.
Okay.
If I, if I may interject, the problem with that whole scenario is we don't own the poles.
But we do have equipment around the city that they can use to mount this equipment to. It doesn't necessarily need to be light poles. If they can put it on any piece of our infrastructure, we can charge $150 a month per installation, is that right?
Well, the key to it is, is...
Wait a minute, now, just one, is it $150 a month or a year?
A year.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, but it's just, these distributed systems require a ton of antennas.
I got you, no, I got you, I got you, I just...
I think we can kill two birds with one stone here. And our historical position with these telecommunications companies have been to say no, and we have been approached already by microcell tower companies to come to our city, and that has been our attitude towards them. We do not want to put a third party between us and the people who can help improve our cellular reception in Palm Coast and us. That it's, there's no additional way to put it, that this is going to cause a friction when these telecommunications companies come to us. The entire environment of cellular communication deployments is about to change.
And I'm not sure, and I'm just going to throw, that I'm excited about that.
I agree.
This is my city, and there's a reason we put our ordinances together.
I agree, I completely agree.
However, we haven't sat down and said, we're not putting up cell towers, we just haven't had anybody put their antennas on our cell towers.
So...
But wait a minute, so we're talking years of that, I mean, not just, not just like the last six months, I mean, it's been, we've had the towers, they just don't put their, you know, so it's not us saying, no, sorry, you can't put cell towers up. It's them saying, nah, sorry, we're not putting antennas on your...
But we do have ordinances that prevent people from putting towers up in their backyards. That's, yeah, absolutely.
And I want that.
I agree, I completely agree. But now we no longer have a choice in our right-of-ways.
Right, but we're talking right-of-ways now.
And that's all public...
And what I'm, now, let me take you, take what you're thinking from a different perspective, okay? Instead of technical, I'm thinking business.
Sure, same here.
And I'm sitting, and I'm thinking, if I invest in this infrastructure, I get no more customers, I get no more revenue. I'm AT&amp;T.
Yep, that's...
I invest in all this infrastructure, and I end up with the same revenue...
It's network improvement. So there's two issues that these result...
You know what? I understand that, but from a business perspective, I don't stand and say, well, you know, it's going to be better for my customers, always.
So right now, there's, there's a bottleneck in the networks. This tall tower infrastructure creates a bottleneck with the amount of data that it can actually transfer. So as we move forward into the future, and all of our applications become more data-intensive, they're going to need additional deployments for their existing customers to have the same service that they have today.
So, so how long am I waiting? So how long am I waiting for this?
So July 1st is when this goes into effect.
No, 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 I don't care about that. I want to know, so based on what you're saying-
Yep.
We're having data issues, it's going to grow, obviously, because the devices are going to be more and more data-
Resolution goes up, yeah, HD.
And, but where, how long am I waiting to finally get cell service?
You're seeing, so right now, you're already seeing network saturation happening, so that threshold that when we all use too much data, that nobody gets any data, that is already occurring on some of these, on some of these networks, and that's because of the infrastructure they have in place. A small tower deployment solves that because they can use different channels of communication, the fifth generation 5G, so-
And let me ask this, so what we're talking about tonight prevents that how?
So this contract that Diamond wants us to enter to already goes against what this Senate bill is. So this offers exclusive rights to our public land use.
Okay, well, explain to our public land use, not our easements, though, not our right-of-ways. Bill?
Mayor, if I, if I could, before the attorney, you know, Mr. Clufus has outlined a number of things, some of them actually support the fact we need help. But let me start off with this question, and Bill can confirm this, because I've talked to him today about this issue, is that we're really talking apples and oranges here. This new legislation is about public right-of-way, our streets, and it is not about our existing towers, it has no impact on our, what you would call fee simple property, property we own that's not public right-of-way, and that's where our towers are today. You know, that's your parks, your fire stations, those type of things. Totally agree that if this bill is signed, that it makes it very clear that we can't say no to people who want to come in and use a public right-of-way on public facilities, and this means, yes, poles-
It turns them into utilities.
Yes, basically says they can use our public right-of-way like electric company and other telecommunications. It doesn't have any impact on our cell towers. Now, what the technical people tell me is that these are all going to get tied together. They're not mutually exclusive, usually, but it's extending their current network and trying to improve on that.
But you just contradicted yourself.
So, Mr. Clufus, I'd appreciate if you'd let me finish.
I'm just pointing at the contradiction.
So what we are attempting to do with this contract is twofold. One of them is market our current towers. And if they want to go with the microcells, that doesn't exclude that whatsoever with this contract. But more importantly, right up front, what we need help with are those ordinances. That's why we have, your next item is actually a request to make it public that we have legislation in progress. Why is that important is because, like any other state law, there are some things that we can still do, it actually requires us to do some things, to protect our public right-of-way for safety reasons, our facilities, et cetera.
And to come and comply?
Yes. Now, this contract is in no way contrary to that, but I've asked Bill to actually, and I would recommend that we amend this, to make it very clear, a provision in there that says, "This contract in no way is in conflict with this new law." Even if it is, we'd still have to abide by that law. But to have us sit back like we have been, we're more than happy to do that, but just sit back and wait for the carriers to come see us, really puts us in a disadvantage. I will tell you, yes, we have one of these companies, and it's not a provider, it's another tower company, that came into the right-of-way and requested towers. Now, this is a 150-foot tower, this wasn't a microcell, they were actually talking about putting a large tower like we have in our parks-
These are limited to 50 feet.
On our-
Yes, I know, the new ones are slightly above a light pole.
Yes, and so what we told them was no, because, in our opinion, totally inappropriate to have one of these large towers right along our streets. This state law is not going to allow that to happen, and that's where our land use regulations still come into effect, that if you don't meet the criteria of the state law, you don't automatically get to use our right-of-way.
Clufus said it's like line-of-sight issues or safety, direct safety issues.
There's a variety of things, but it also-
They're very, I mean, what I read, they're very-
So where I think-
Very specific.
Yes, they're hard to get around.
What I think is very important is that we not sit back and wait for all this to happen around us. This is where, yes, we need to actually, because the changing happened, now's the time where we need to update our ordinances, we need to move forward, but in order to do that, we need experts to help us, and this contract is, they will help us at no cost.
Yeah.
And it won't exclude these companies from coming into our right-of-way whatsoever, but what it will do is, our existing facilities, our current public property that's not right-of-way, yes, they get the first right of refusal. In other words, if there is a company that says, you know, Verizon, whatever, the carriers want to put up an additional tower, because of our partnership here, they would do that.
For example, if a company wanted to put up a tower on our property that wasn't in a right-of-way to complete their DAS deployment, they would get right of first refusal.
Yes.
That's a problem. Because if there's a company coming to us trying to deploy their infrastructure and we make it a pain in the butt, it's not going to happen. They're going to flow through the laws of permeability, they're going to go with the path of least resistance, and they'll tell you that. And I talked to them and they told me this is going to happen whether you like it or not.
You know, and I'm looking at this as two, personally, this is how I'm looking at this as two different things, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm looking at it as what we're doing today and then making sure we are prepared for what you're talking about. Because you take sparse areas, they're not running infrastructure through Palm Coast in a sparse area. They'd rather just put up, or just throw a tower on, I mean, an antenna on a tower to serve in a sparse area. You know, we're not Orlando or Jacksonville. I mean, I'm very, very concerned and I don't believe, I mean, I'm trying to think, if this was me, would I spend all this money on infrastructure and have the same revenue? I would just not do it. I mean, and if my, and if I were on a board and my chairman did, and my president did that, I'd fire him. Because, now, now, what would I do? I would say, "Okay, if we're having bottleneck issues and you want to expand some, yes, I would sit there and go, 'Okay, we're using the tower because that's already there and now we're going to expand.'" But to run infrastructure throughout the entire city, I would not do that.
And you would fail to gain any customers that use future devices that use it, so what you're saying is that you don't see an-
You know what, that just doesn't flow with today. We have people who can't get cell phones, do they not buy cell phones?
Absolutely.
They buy cell phones.
Absolutely.
So if-
They're going to keep buying cell phones, they're going to keep buying brand-new iPhones.
And here's the other thing, see, now, if you were going to ask me the future, I'm sitting here thinking, "The future is not cell."
What?
The future is Wi-Fi over cell.
Mobile data.
So less cell, more Wi-Fi. Now, what if it goes that way?
What, I don't understand, so you said you're-
I know you, you know what, listen-
Because your argument here, please try to understand where I'm coming from here.
My argument?
Yeah, for Wi-Fi over mobile data. So are you saying that-
Mobile data, you know, that term is irrelevant, it's data that flows over something.
Not true.
Not true.
Correct.
Okay, I'm not going to argue a technical issue with you, go ahead, because you're not qualified and I'm not qualified.
Oh, I am qualified, I'm a software engineer, no, I'm not.
I'm a software, you know, wait a minute, timeout, no, this, I have to stop here because I've heard this in the paper, I've listened to this, I have been a software engineer for 31 years.
What's your stack?
What's my what?
Your stack of technologies that you work in.
More than you have ever seen.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense. What, I work on everything, I work on from Hadoop, from Big Data, all the way down to basic Java. Have you worked on Big Data for Google?
I assure you, I am familiar with Hadoop.
No, I did not ask you if you're familiar, I said, "Have you worked on Google Hadoop data for marketing?"
So when you say Google data, do you mean data sets they publish for use on Hadoop? Because that I have, yeah, I've done the tutorials, too.
I'm not sure we're going to get anywhere with that kind of discussion.
Yeah, can I make them up?
I'm just a mawkler, can I just-
I have a couple of questions, just so I'm trying to understand. So the current carriers that are on our towers, do they have a term of contract, like a length that's-
It basically continues, as long as they keep paying us and they want to stay on there, it will allow them to do that.
And then who negotiates that with our current towers?
The current towers, the current carriers on the towers, and they all have escalating clauses, it's usually Consumer Price Index or 3%, so every year it goes up slightly. And so there is no renegotiating, it says that we will allow them with that escalating clause every year.
Okay, so they never have to come back to anybody?
The way it is written right now, yes, on all those.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I want to try to address some of the legal questions that have been asked and raised about the agenda items that we're talking about, because as I understand it, we've got a couple of agenda items. One is a contract with Diamond Consulting, and then we also have a proposal for a resolution about legislation in progress. And they're not identical, but they're kind of sort of related. So let me try to explain it from how I see this. Your first agenda item is this wireless facilities contract between the city of Palm Coast and Diamond. Now, that is a contract which involves, and this is in Section 1, all property, and it's a defined term with a capital P, owned and controlled by the city. And what it requires, or what it's calling for, is for this private consultant to go out and do various things with regard to our publicly-owned property, and specifically prepare an inventory of the site, submit a report, most importantly, develop a wireless master plan, and facilitate marketing of the city's property. Now, a very, very small, arguably small subset of the city property is our right-of-ways. And those right-of-ways are what is being discussed and preempted in this legislation that apparently, not apparently, has passed both houses and was waiting for the governor's signature. And I am, you know, if I could know whether he was going to sign it or not, I'd go out and buy Lotto tickets, I told this to Mr. Clufus today, and you wouldn't see me again. But assuming that he's going to sign it, is there preemption? There absolutely is preemption of regulations, local governments' regulations, what we can do with these microcells, small facilities, in our right-of-way.
The Public Service Commission will regulate it if it becomes a law, I mean, because they regulate cellphone-
I don't, it just, this bill does not say who's going to regulate it, it simply says, "We can't except for," and then it has a limited number of exceptions that we can try to protect our own right-of-ways.
I guess would be the device will be under their jurisdiction, you see, but not the actual utility-
Land use?
Yeah.
I did not see anything in the bill that specifically gave jurisdiction to a state agency to do the actual regulations. It's more of what it takes away than what it gives to the state. It takes things away as far as, again, regulation of some very specific types of technology that are way above my head, but there are specific types of technology in our right-of-way, and more importantly, on our poles and in our right-of-way. Now, where I would disagree with Mr. Clufus to some degree is, this bill, this law, which will hopefully, well, will probably be a law soon, does not address our towers on our parcels that are outside of our right-of-way. That has nothing to do with this.
Can I stop you one second? Now, Nick, you said you were going to argue that point.
Yes.
Okay, let me hear what you have to say.
The wireless data, when we have a computer in our home and we plug it into a router that is, in my case, it's connected to fiber which goes out the side of my house to the backbone, that data is not the same as when-
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
I meant, I meant the land use of our own-
Yeah.
Of our own property.
So it becomes an issue-
We'll argue about the other thing later.
Understood, and I think that shows that maybe we need a professional to come in here and educate us on what this is going to impact us, how it's going to impact us. But the land use case, and this is coming directly from the Government Affairs Director, is that they have seen the position taken where they're not, cities will not make it difficult for these carriers to come in and use their right-of-way, but because they can't. But where they need to extend their DAS network and they don't have a right-of-way in that range, in that, whatever segment is, then at that point, they are forced to go through someone that we contract with, in this case, it would be Diamond. So they are not able to directly stop their DAS deployment or a small cell tower deployment, but they're able to put the hinges on it to try to squeeze out as much of the right-of-first refusal and then try to work it out like that.
That's good, but that wasn't my question, and that's my fault, it wasn't clear. I thought you had an argument that the law, the new law that is going to pass, did affect private, public property where our towers were on. Not right-of-ways, but public, what'd you call them, sex, whatever.
Fee simple properties.
Yeah, okay. Is, do you, is what I'm asking?
No, I'm-
You're okay with what?
Absolutely, but the, I just wanted to clarify that the issue becomes not when they can't find, it actually becomes a problem when these companies can't find a right-of-way to extend their networks. So that's why the public-
And just so we're all clear, I want to read from the bill, because it says that "An authority," that's us, "may not prohibit, regulate, or charge for the co-location of small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way." And that's the basis for what I was saying, is that that's the scope of the preemption, is in our right-of-way with these types of facilities, and there's about 10 definitions of these different types of technology. And Mr. Clufus is right, there is an exclusivity provision in here, and I want to read that so that we're all on the same page. "An authority," again, us, "may not enter into an exclusive arrangement with any person for the right to attach equipment to authority utility poles." So again, it's arguably a much narrower prohibition, because it deals with, we can't enter into a contract, we couldn't do anything with Diamond that would allow them to have an exclusive right to attach equipment to our authority utility poles.
And a cellphone tower qualifies as a utility pole?
Not, it has to be in public right-of-way.
No, it doesn't.
And we have none in the public right-of-way.
That's where I want to get that clear. I need, because that's a very, that's a very sticky, I mean, because, and here's the deal, I don't want to go into this contract.
Let's not guess, this is the definition in the law, an authority utility pole means a utility pole owned by an authority in the right-of-way.
No, we, aren't we a utility that we own our-
Very few poles, you have only a handful of poles in the right-of-way that we own.
Like light, streetlights and things like that?
The only point I'm trying to make is I think that there is a-
Is it a fiber utility that owns these communication poles, though? These, I'm sorry, cellular towers? Because that's, we operate our own ISP utility, FiberNet is a utility, correct? That's a municipal-owned utility.
Yeah, but I'm not understanding, I'm talking about poles, and that this is all about attaching equipment to our poles, and we only have a handful of poles in our right-of-way. All the poles you see out there are privately owned by primarily FPNL.
Mayor, if I, can I just finish one comment? All I was trying to do is try to make a connection or clarify the connection between what is absolutely true, there is legislation coming our way regarding what we can and cannot do with our own right-of-way, versus the agenda item, which is the Diamond contract, and whether or not those are related in any way, and what, and whether there is a conflict, to Mr. Clufus's point, whether there's a conflict between this legislation, assuming that it's signed by the governor, and what is being proposed. And to the extent that there could be a conflict, as I mentioned to Councilmember Clufus today, that I think could be handled by adding a provision, if that's where this council wants to go, to say specifically that this wireless facilities contract shall not in any way be construed so as to violate the provisions of this law, if it's, or this bill, if it becomes law. Now, with that said, with that, agreed, with that said, there may be other non-legal reasons that this council may have with regard to the policy implications of this contract. policy implications of this, this contract.
Well, I was going to say, and to Councilman Clufus's point, I guess I'm trying to get to where you started, which was an introduction to this piece of legislation and a recommendation on tabling it till after the legislation. So going to Steve's point, but, so then where do we go from there as far as a plan?
Yep. I mean, so I've, so I've talked to all these Government Affairs Directors, and they have told me that they are willing to interact with our city management directly. And they are very much willing to. AT&amp;T has a whole team set up to talk directly with us. All I'm saying is that we table us and we give it a shot. Just if we talk to them and see what we like. If we don't, we can still go into this contract. And I'm not saying that this isn't probably the best option we have in front of us, because that's why they are suggesting we enter this contract.
All right. So this is what I'm hearing. You're suggesting you call these people, they want to work with us, and the city staff did not?
So.
You got to say that, because if.
I don't think, I don't think.
Or was not receptive to.
Or they weren't reached out to. These.
Well, that's what I mean. So they didn't call them, or, or they weren't receptive to their response.
Sure. So I would have to refer to city management. Have you ever spoken to Heather Duncan, who is the AT&amp;T Regional Director for Governmental Affairs?
I'm not going to participate in this.
So I don't know, to be honest. I didn't ask her whether she's ever talked to city management before.
I know Heather Duncan.
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, I mean, but, but I will tell you.
I still don't see how this impacts. I, I still don't see the new law.
All this stuff, so I have a couple more questions, because I know you guys understand it. So the way I'm hearing, and thank you for tweeting out to everybody and contacting them, I know that was a lot of work. But what you're saying is because of the bill, that these companies, and I read the same thing during the, during the meeting we had, that it said AT&amp;T is about to burst in Florida, and they're going to be looking for places to put them. So they can put it on anything in Palm Coast, right? They can find little buildings if the people agree, and all these other things. So at this time, they're looking for all these places to put these little towers or whatever they're going to put there. So if they come here now and they're saying, okay, we're ready, we have all these things we're going to put here, and then we have a contract with them, they're going to say, well, let's go over to the next town, because they're already in the middle of a contract.
I don't have any idea why. See, because if they're coming here and they're going to put up mini towers, that's nothing to do with them.
But if they need to place a mini tower in a place where there's no public right of way, they're going to have to construct a tower, and they will erect their own tower.
Oh, oh.
I'm sorry, pole, pole, pole. I'm sorry.
Okay, but in a right of way? No. Okay, there is no right of way, is what you're saying. There is no feasible right of way.
Well, yes, correct. So they need to attach these two points. They're going to.
So it's going to either be public, it's either going to be public property owned or privately owned?
Or city, or city owned.
Well, it's public.
Yes, correct.
So it could be county, it could be us, it could be, but, or privately owned. So if they come to us and say, we need to put a pole on this piece of plot, this piece of land you have here, it's not a tower. We're talking about a 50 foot, one of those 50 foot poles. So, Mr. Reichman, do, do that, does that have to go through Diamond in this contract? Did you hear that, that exchange?
I was listening. No, I was listening. I'm positive. I'm sitting there listening to every word.
Okay.
So does it have to go through Diamond?
So we're not talking about a cell tower?
The Diamond, as I, as I understand the contract with Diamond, is, is that their jurisdiction is over anything that's going to be put on city property, not private property.
For the use of, I mean, what does that mean? It's obviously more than just.
Wireless, it calls it a, they're going to develop a wireless master plan.
Okay.
And so that, and, but it, but what is, what does that mean? It means that they're going to inventory all potential sites that are on, quote, the property, and that means city owned property. So to the extent that that could include city owned right of way, and this bill is signed by the governor, then this would preempt their ability to act as a.
No, we're not talking about right of way.
I know that.
Oh, okay.
And I'm saying, if you want to broadly define the term property
Yeah.
in this contract, that potentially could include right of way. But because of this bill, that's going to, in my opinion, would, would remove from city owned property their ability to get involved in, and arguably created a, some sort of impediment to the placement of these micro towers in the right of way consistent with this bill. But beyond that, my understanding is, is that this contract only gives them the right to deal with the location or co-location on towers and other city, or equipment on city property.
You see, and here's what my fear is. If we don't pursue the tower scenario and rely on the, on this, on the mini towers, you know, I know it sounds silly, but when I first moved here, the, the great technology was cable. You know, it was like, whoa. And you only got it in areas that were paying for, you know what I'm saying, where they were making money. And what I'm afraid of is we don't go after, you know, a, we don't pursue adding antennas to our towers and getting more service, and promoting this, this, this also, putting up the mini towers. I think we're going to, I think we're going to, we're going to have people who are going to be waiting long, again, for more cell service. I just don't see a citywide infrastructure being put in. And I had one other question. AT&amp;T comes in, drops a pole, puts a thing on, do they have to allow someone else to put a, something on that pole? Because it's a utility.
Are you asking in our right of way?
Yeah, so, so AT&amp;T comes and they run an infrastructure through the F section.
We can't prohibit them because.
No, no, we don't prohibit them. But let's say another company comes in and says, we want to put our, our mini tower on your pole.
Based upon my understanding, there's nothing that, that, that we can regulate to either encourage that or to prevent that. And that is going to be something that will be regulated by the state of Florida.
AT&amp;T can say no.
Unless the state of Florida tells AT&amp;T that they have to say yes. That would be my opinion.
Yeah. So we can have like, see, that's why I don't, I, I'm just having a problem with this whole infrastructure. I'm sitting there going, AT&amp;T comes in and runs these poles and does this infrastructure. So what are we locked into AT&amp;T then?
No, whichever carrier wants to expand their infrastructure. But this is a different signal.
Oh, so then what, they put a pole next to it?
They can.
They're forced to mount.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you, Tallahassee.
I agree. But this is also a different signal than what comes from a cellphone tower. So one is.
Still don't want them all on my.
I agree, but the difference is the density of the data that they can transmit through these small cell towers versus a big cell tower. That's where this is going. And that's the reason that they want to expand out these DAS systems, these small cell towers.
I understand that. No, I'm saying, and I'm saying I want both. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm, I'm not, don't, don't misunderstand me. I'm not against these, I'm against, I don't like the idea of potentially 1,000 poles run down a road, you know. But as far as the technology and what it means to us, I'm, I'm 100% in favor. But what I don't want to do, for very little to no money, is have people wait longer than they need to for better cell service, if we can engage in this contract and get the, the cell service, the towers, and things like that, set up.
But also, you said when you, when you tweeted to them, they were responsive.
Absolutely.
So based on Mr. Landon's answer, I think we haven't been reaching out to them. So maybe now that we're reaching out to them, maybe we can get them to go on our own without putting a contract in.
And I hate to run longer on this, but the thing is, these, these guys know where their service is. And the average organic growth of a cellphone tower is attracting one carrier every 10 years. So it's very, it's a really tough market, and that question ends up coming down to whether they have the connections at the carrier level to make them put their equipment on our, our towers. That's the only way that they would specifically be able to do something that they wouldn't organically have done themselves. And I can't answer whether they do or not. I believe they're working in good faith.
Mayor, if I could, if I could maybe try to apply from a practical standpoint what happens from our standpoint, and not this back and forth with technology and getting all, all that. The, let's, let me, let me start with this scenario, because it's, it happens to us. We have somebody that comes in and says, we want to put up a tower. Okay? And we want to put it up in Waterfront Park. Then immediately, that kicks in some review and, and our ordinance and a variety of other things. And then we say, well, no, you can't put it in Waterfront Park. So then they say, well, how about we want to put it in Grand Swamp? Well, that's not city property, so go talk to the county. Or we want to put it on private property. And then that's when we go around circles. Okay? So, because we don't have an answer for them as to what we allow and what we won't allow. Then you have a company that comes in and says, we want to put a tower up at the post office. And our ordinance doesn't allow it. So then we say, okay, but we can put the cell tower up at our water plant just down the road. Okay? But we have to change our ordinance. And that takes four to six months. Then the next thing that, that happens is, okay, we get all that done, so let's negotiate a contract. So how much is, what's the going price for a tower to go up?
$150,000, $30,000 lease per year per carrier?
The, how much are they going to pay us for our property? We, we don't know. Okay? We know what we get in other places, and then they say, well, but that's not the going rate today because we have all this other technology. And we don't have the ability to negotiate with these people. So we're, this whole process that we do right now, and if they did contact us, it would get very convoluted, it would be very cumbersome, and it's very difficult on them. And that's why, okay, I'm, I'm not dealing with that. I will go down the street. So what we are trying to do here, at no cost to the taxpayer, is put together a plan that says, these are the sites that you can build a tower on. You don't have to go hunt one. We're going to say, these are the sites that you can build a tower on. Or these are the sites where we have a tower. And that would be city and otherwise. And then also have the experts that do this for a living, who provide guidance as to how much, what the, what the, what the leases should be, what's the, what is the best practice in this industry. It, you know, it's, because what I hear is it's not in conflict with what Mr. Clufus is saying. He said, well, we need to hire an expert to come talk to us. We, we have those experts here that are more than happy to talk to you. The, the difference is that they're not going to charge you, and they're going to put skin in the game to try to then make it happen once that occurs. If you put us in the position of dealing with each one of these individually, without giving us the resources to deal with them efficiently, we're going to continue to struggle. And that's not based on just theoretical, I'm an expert in technology.
Can we use the fact team?
That is, that is based on real life experience at what we're doing today. So.
And let me just interject.
And what we're doing today doesn't work well.
And I can tell you, I mean, that's, this has been a discussion going on in the county since I was on the commission in 2006. And it is strange, it is challenging. You wonder what is that magic moment, because we struggled with it with a tower out at our airport, the ugly tree looking tower that's out there, and couldn't get carriers to get interested. But we approved it from a private entity. So I, I don't know what the magic answer is, but I know certainly that doing nothing is not an option. It just isn't. It's, you know, we, we have a very serious issue, and I will go back to it, a very serious fire drought issue in our community today, and it just scares me. It really is. It's, it's.
And that's my, I, I share what you're saying exactly is this. I like Nick's ideas. I really do. But I don't want to put on hold taking action today, waiting for the new technology. Because if we do that, we can technically do that forever, because the technology is always new. This is a big step. This is a big change. It's not a little technology change. This is a big change coming across. It's coming, we know it's coming, but I personally am not ready to, I don't want it to be, I, I don't want to get in its way, but I also don't want to wait on it for something we need dras, that we need drastically, and we've needed, like you're saying, for, for a while. I would like to see a way to marry the two.
Mr. Landon, I'm sorry. Mr. Landon is 100% right. And in the past, we have used people who are professionals at assisting us with negotiation costs for our towers, for them being built, and the leases. So I called them, and they recommend that we wait. I talked to Ken from Steel in the Air, who we have put on retainer in the past, who highly recommends that we wait. I've also talked to other people at the League of Cities who say, this is going to change the entire game. We should hang, hang tight. So maybe we do need to, like Mr. Landon said, find somebody who is perhaps an impartial party to this whole thing, to just, we trust them in the past. This is another opportunity for us to move forward. With that same trust that we exhibited to them in the past, perhaps we should just reach out to them and listen to them. I have made my phone calls. I have done due diligence. I have called every single person, hoping that I could try to find another angle on this. But this is what it is.
So your suggestion is tabling the item, waiting, and then waiting for the technology to come in for us to directly work with?
I think what you said was get somebody in, I think.
Yep. Also, just make a phone call to the Director of Government Affairs.
I mean, they're, they're going to tell us what you just told us today.
Yep.
They're not going to tell us anything different.
We can do it no matter you say yes or no. So what, are you going to make it easy on yourself? Are you going to make it painful?
Well, I don't understand the pain. I'm really not following. I mean.
Well, we do have experts that we, that we have, that we know through city and county, people that come in, what would be the harm of just tabling it?
Well, because, let me ask a question to the gentleman from Diamond. Your focus in this contract, is it going to involve any mini tower structures?
Well, I mean, we're going to be working for you guys. So, you know, primarily, the idea is to take a, an inventory of the existing infrastructure, and, and available infrastructure here in Palm Coast, and to try to maximize that and, and leverage that, the use of that infrastructure, and including in that definition of infrastructure being fee on real estate of the city, maximizing that, and then trying to generate more antennas, which in turn generate revenue for Palm Coast, which we share, so.
Because I want to address the, what I propose, what I perceive as the single problem, and, and I, that might not be it, but that's what I perceive, is the scenario of city property. So we, so there's a, there's a line of micro cells going in, and there's one stretch where there's no right of way, but there's city property. Is that possible? I mean, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to, because I, that is a problem if we're sitting there and we say, okay, there's the city. So in order to fulfill this, this micro channel, there's this one piece, there's this one dead area. And if we have this one dead area, pretty much negates the whole process. But there's only a piece of public property. There's, how could there be no right of way? That's what I'm trying to understand. How can any property not have, and I'm asking this as a dummy?
Every, every piece of property has to have access to it, obviously. Let me, let me give you, try to just give you a practical example again. Okay, so let's don't do the contract with Diamond. But we still want to hire experts. So what are we going to do? We're going to go out with an RFP, and this time, it won't be have any cost sharing. And if Diamond's smart, they're going to submit their same proposal, but without cost sharing. And very likely, they're going to be ranked very high. So now you're going to have the experts that are in the room coming back to give you advice, and it will be somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 for that advice. And, and why would we want to go out and hire someone to come in and give us advice when we actually have people that are some of the largest people in the business, that manage over 200 sites in the U.S.?
300 towers, that's a deceiving number.
And the, I mean, this, this, but to tell us to go back and start over again and hire somebody?
We don't have to. We can just reach out to these Government Affairs officials. We have a fact team. They just need.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're going to tell me those are going to be impartial?
No, the fact team, just.
No, 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 forget the fact team. We're talking experts. The fact team is not experts on this. And I don't, I don't want to, I don't want the affairs people coming in and telling me what's best for me, because, I mean, you're sitting here telling me what he's saying is not best for me, but I'm supposed to believe AT&amp;T is going to come in and tell me what's best for me?
You don't think them sitting here is best for them?
It's got to be. That's how the country. It's gotta be, that's how the country rolls.
That's what I'm saying, but we can do it with best for ourselves.
Which is always AT&amp;T, okay.
This is a philosophical difference, is, I'm telling you, staff cannot do it by ourselves.
That's okay.
Okay? And that, we're not going to get AT&amp;T, Verizon, and the likes come in and contract with us, other than for their own. So we're, if you want us to do this correctly, we're going to have to hire somebody.
Listen, I, you know, I can't imagine, I, I, I'm still stuck on, on this, I, I see the cell tower methodology going the same way as the microcell, where it's ultimately going to hash out where one company is going to own the poles and lease to everyone else. Now, that may be a carrier in the, you know, it might be AT&amp;T, or it might be Joe's Poles, I mean, I don't know. But I, I mean, I hope that's the way it goes, and we don't end up with, you know, a pole for every carrier on a road, through an infrastructure through the whole town. So again, I'm still, I'm, I'm going to end here and say, I still don't see the downside to this contract. But I do see an upside to what's coming, but I don't see a downside in going this route.
Well, I'm going to take a moment and open public comment at this time. Any member from the public wish to make comment on Agenda Item Number 12 or 13, please do so at this time.
Charles Ebert, Mayor's Counselman, nothing against Mr. Noble, but young blood is young blood. And I don't care about your, how, your experiences in service, he has the young blood. Okay? And what he's talking about, Tallahassee, like you said, is going to dictate, and they're, they're, they're going to turn it around, and if we get into a contract, and Tallahassee doesn't agree with us, then we're going to look like fools. I suggest, as he says, as Mr. Cuff says, table it until we find out what Tallahassee's going to do. Now, you can shake your head all you want to, sir, but you know what? You always get in an argument during these meetings, and this came up during the workshop also. Okay? Now, it's time to quit the bickering and work together. This is our city here, this is our city, and I'm part of the city too. And I'm 68 years old, and I don't know the technology, and we got other people here that don't know some of the technology, but we are learning. And I don't care about your 35 years, sir. Okay? Thank you very much.
Because I have to, because I was spoken at. Hello? Holy, yeah, no, sorry.
Again, Ted Chruska, citizen. I'd like to thank you very much, you've enlightened me a lot about what's going on. I would say, we have some older people on here, don't let the bra beat you, you're a young guy, stand up for yourself, you're doing a good job. But I would say also, with this here, this is sounds, sounds, also sounds good, but I would table it until after the stuff comes out from Tallahassee in a couple, two or three days, or whatever it is, and we look at it, and we, and see what you want to do with it, instead of going the other, the other route. Makes more, makes more sense with the technology, thank you.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. What I say is, don't table this one whit. Go along with what the city attorney said. Put in the stipulations in there. That's to cover your rear end. But wait, see this, it's getting thin up here. And I'm a little bit older than that 68-year-old, and I can tell you right now, there's a lot of people who can't wait. They're sitting, or they, they're in the area, and they can't wait, they, they, you can walk from one part of a house to the other and get a signal, or don't get a signal. And that's what a whole lot of people are going with, and we don't know, we don't have anything right now to tell us, hey, look, we need this here, we need that there, we need this here, we need that there. In order to do those kind of studies and stuff like that, it's money, baby. They're not charging us. But they have to do that study to know at least what it is. Anybody who brings in anything, AT&amp;T, Verizon, they all have to have, have to do a study. Of course, they're going to pay for the study, but at the same time, they want to put in their own, their own stuff. I understand, it's money, everything is money. And we need to look at it that way too, but at the same time, we got to say, hey, look, you got people who, who are down, who can't, who can't function right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
You hesitated.
Jack Calhoun, Palm Coast. You, you, I lost my train of thought.
Take a minute.
Give me a minute, stop the clock. Let me sit down and come back again. Thank you.
Good evening, George Mail, Palm Coast. There's, to me, seems to be a little semantics going on here tonight. We say towers, we say poles, sometimes I think when you say poles, you mean towers, sometimes you say towers, I'm not sure if you mean poles. Diamond here is talking about towers, is that all they are able or interested in putting up? From the graph, that chart that you showed before, there's no towers south of where the tennis center is. I live in Quail Hollow, so basically, there's nothing south of 100. So Quail Hollow, Seminole Woods, there's no towers down there, and because of the airport, I, and air height requirements, I don't think you're going to be able to put any towers there because of the airport. So if it came down to you had to put poles up with the microbes on them, is that something Diamond would do, or they would just say, no, we can't do that? So just tell me, when you say towers, what are the, the height requirements, or what are we speaking about, and, just so that we don't get mixed up, but something's going to be, be done south on Bel Air Boulevard and on Seminole Woods, and if it doesn't include towers, is that something they'll be able to do? Thank you.
Sorry. You're old enough.
I'm so late.
All right? We'll be here till midnight if you think.
I know.
Good evening, David Ferguson, Palm Coast. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Jim Landon, Bill. I've been following this topic for a while, and I think a few things need to be said. One, everyone agrees that we need better cell phone service in Palm Coast and in the county. We all agree on that, I hope, right? So I'm not sure if Diamond communication is the best solution right now. I did a little bit of research with some personal friends who have been in the cell business, maybe longer than Councilman Nobel. And he told me that if you think that Diamond Communications can bring AT&amp;T and Verizon to the table, he said, that may not be a good assumption, because frankly, they know more about what's going on in this Palm Coast area than Diamond knows, and what all of us know collectively with the staff. So they have demographics, they have drop calls, data, they have all that stuff. That, that's their business. And private industry, I think, can do a better job of figuring out when we need these cell towers. Now, in the spirit of what the laws are going to change, I don't have any idea what that means, because I could never figure out those things myself, even when I had a position up there. But anyway, it appears as though they're going to make it a little easier for the carriers to expand their service. I think we can all agree on that. So I would suggest, I don't know that Diamond's going to run away in 30 or 60 days. If they are, I would be suspect of the agreement in the first place. So if they're as good as they say they are, and they can do what they say they're going to do, the only reservation I have about it is they're going to put their hand in their pocket, maybe earn it, if they help bring new carriers into, into town. I heard the comment, we don't care about the money, we should care about the money, because the money helps keep the tax base low. So the enterprise funds are some things that need to be capitalized upon, which brings me to a little bit to FiberNet, which I'll keep for another time, but I think that that's an asset that we really need to expand. And as it relates to wireless communication, I think we're sitting on a goldmine, and the ability to have ISPs that can survive and pay us for the service of bringing it to non-governmental agencies, I think, is an important criteria for us to pursue in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
When they pass a law, and, and you, and you say, well, let's wait, let's wait, and let's wait. They'll pass a law today, they'll pass a law tomorrow, and then you're waiting for today to tomorrow, then you wait a month, then you say, well, they're going to put a new one in, and the governor may sign it, so let's table it. Now, how many times can you table something? It's here, vote on it, you know, you're arguing back and forth, back and forth, but I don't hear anybody voting on anything. And personally, I don't understand what you're saying anyway. But let's get it down, let's finish already, you know, we could be here till, well, I remember going back with the, with the, with the county, and they were in a courthouse, and we were there till two, three o'clock in the morning. I don't want to see that, thank you. Do something. I mean, instead of arguing, you know, you argue and you go outside, oh, you can't because of the law. But get something done.
Doing that, please, this is public comment. Next speaker, please. Now, closed public comment, I want to yield.
No, I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a question, if I could?
Yeah. I just want to address the commenters, and then we'll take it back to the council. I think we've all heard the comments as far as which side of the position our commenters are on. Stipulations, table Tallahassee, we don't know what they're going to do in Tallahassee, but I'm pretty certain that this one's going to pass, and the governor's going to sign it. I don't, I don't think, did you hear anything that, I mean?
It's passed. It's on, it's, and I don't mean, I don't mean to be argumentative, but it's, it's on the governor's desk.
By the governor.
That's right, that's what, and if, and so, I mean, beyond that, I, I don't know what the governor's going to do.
But I didn't hear anything other than comments, so, okay. Okay.
My only question is, and I know it's, the, the main thing is just to get cell service out there and, and get it for all the residents. Can you guarantee that you can get it quicker than if we were to wait for AT&amp;T to come themselves?
Well, what I can guarantee is that we have experienced negotiating these contracts with AT&amp;T, and with all manner of third parties, and many different, many different clients that we have all around the country. So we've done this, you know, literally just with AT&amp;T, for example, probably 30 or 40 or 50 times, in different jurisdictions. So I, I don't know how many times you, you guys have, but I, I don't think it's that many. So can I guarantee it, you know? Randy, you used to work there for, as a development manager for 15 years, I, I don't know if he could guarantee it, they have budgets, they have, you know, they've got to get it in the budget, get it planned, and get it approved, go through the engineering, go through all of that, and then, you know, get it deployed. But I think, you know, one, once the, the rubber meets the road, and, and you're actually dealing with people that deploy the stuff, and not the government affairs people, we can take it from there a lot, a lot more quickly.
Is that your only question, Councilmember Cuff? Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I guess a couple of questions. One, I, in reading through the proposed contract with Diamond, I'm trying to figure out what the interaction of that contract with the new legislation would be, other than in the public, public rights away. I assume, although the contract uses different terminology, that if the city were approached by a carrier or a provider that was using the small towers and the microcell equipment, who said, we really want to put a pole in the back end of your community center, because that's where it needs to be to link up the rest of the poles in the right-of-way, that that would be an installation that we would have to give Diamond a right of first refusal on, even though it's not a cell tower, the way I think of cell towers, even though it's only, can't be more than 50 feet tall, or whatever the standard is, that we would have to go to Diamond and say, Verizon wants to put a 50-foot pole behind the community center, and they're willing to pay us X. Do you want to put the pole there and pay us X, or do we go back to Verizon and tell them, put your pole up? I mean, that's a call that I believe we have even under the new law, if they're not talking about locating the equipment in the right-of-way. But is that, is, would that, I'm asking the staff primarily, Mr. Reichman, is that your reading of the, the agreement with Diamond?
It is my, it is my reading, and that is, is that if you take a look on page, page two, section, phase one, E, the language in the contract says, "City grants to consultant the exclusive right to market lease and construct wireless facilities," which is a defined term, "at consultant's sole cost and expense on all property, capital P, included in the wireless plan, but only to the extent the city desires to make any specific property available for wireless development." So we're, we're in control when we work with them, as I understand it, with this plan. Remember, this doesn't, this, we're, we're going to be precluded from, from dealing with the rise away, so I just take, in my opinion, take that off the table. So the way I read this, wireless facilities is more than, it's, it's much more than just towers. It's anything that helps with this technology. And it's going to be the placement and, and negotiation for placement of wireless technology on those properties that we allow Diamond to put into the plan. And once those properties are in the plan, and they bring, or someone comes to the city with a, with a plan to put on infra, to put in infrastructure, they have the first right to do that themselves.
On city property.
On city, on the property that's going to be in this plan.
Yes.
And we, and we determine that with them. And if, if they don't want to do it, then we can allow the third party who came to them or to us to put that infrastructure. That's my understanding of this contract.
Now, can I ask one question, right with what Mr. Cuff is saying? So they want to put a 50-foot pole behind the community center, because, how do our ordinances, because now our ordinances work. Once it comes off the right-of-way, they don't have the, they don't have the privilege to just say, we're putting.
That's correct. We have regulations on the books that deal with certain defined types of wireless infrastructure, and where those can be located, and what they can look like, and how they're supposed to be built, and how they're supposed to be secured for safety purposes and so forth.
Gives us the opportunity to help them find a right-of-way. I, I just, I'm having a hard time finding a piece of property where this would go, where there wouldn't be a right-of-way.
I don't think you'd, you'd find that piece of property. Let me just state about our ordinances, they're way out of date.
Right, and that's the other thing.
They are difficult to work with, our staff, you've got land development code, and you've got a, a tower code that are in conflict with one another. I mean, this isn't just about, you know, this legislation is minor compared to the bigger issue that we need help with. And that's, and it all gets tied together, and, and that's why now's such a great time to do this. But without help, you know, and, and once again, if you delay it, other facts of legislation, let me just tell you about delays, is that this goes into law July 1. We may not see anything, any proposals whatsoever for who knows how long. But, you know, this is not popular with cities. Florida League of Cities confirmed with me today that they're going to recommend to the governor that he veto it. The fact of it is, is that if he signs it, probably will, and then we have a city that challenges it, which probably will happen, then this is going to get tied up in court for how long? Two to four years. And in the meantime, we're going to have a whole lot of limbo out there, and none of this is. of this is going to, you know, and so we can wait until all that happens and takes place. I think we need to step out there and get proactive and get after it. And that's what we're trying to do. And I think we're behind, and it's time to move forward. And if you want to wait, we'll sit and wait. And six months from now, we'll bring Diamond's contract back, and you can take a decision, make a decision at that time, if you'd like.
Just say, I don't know if Mr... I want to make sure Mr.
Well, yeah, I did have one other question, but it relates more to the second agenda item than to Diamond's contract. Well, they're tied together, and that's... They are going to assist us in revamping our ordinances. And I know something about the land use part of that, and I agree, it needs to be brought up to date. Are we anticipating, and this may not be a fair question, since this hasn't even been signed by the governor yet, that they are gonna have the expertise to assist us in preparing whatever ordinances we are allowed, under the new law, to put in place for the right-of-way installations?
The answer to that is yes, because this type of preemption law is not unique to Florida, and that other states have done the same thing, and they're being challenged by cities. This is actually... Florida is just one of many cities doing this. And talking to representatives from Diamond, they have actually dealt with this before. And so, yes, they can help us with what our city's doing. It will be... Florida, I'm sure, is unique compared to the others, with nuances, as far as exceptions, et cetera. But there's no question in my mind that they can... Their team can bring that expertise to help us, in addition to our attorneys, who are already starting to work with other cities, and they've talked to us about other cities and what they're doing. That's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to put together a team to address this stuff. And, you know, if you want to delay it, that's fine. We're ready to go. So, it's a matter of whether you want to delay it or move forward.
Well, the second part of my question was, aside from Diamond's expertise, or what they're offering under the contract, I assume the National League of Cities and the law firms that work with them, and Florida League of Cities aren't sitting on their hands as a result of this legislation, and that we will have, aside from Mr. Reichman's firm, other sources of expertise on what can and can't be done under the new statute, and what would or wouldn't be prudent regulation, to the extent we're allowed to regulate the activities under the new statute. Is that a fair statement?
That's absolutely a fair statement, and that's one of the benefits of the Florida League of Cities and the funding for the Florida League of Cities, is that they may not be involved in preparing specific land use regulations for a particular city, but when there's something that is of this kind of importance, that statewide application, they're going to be involved in getting input and trying to prepare model, what they call model regulations, model ordinances, that then can be used as a template by local governments, their attorneys, to make specific for their jurisdiction.
That conclude your questioning?
Yes.
Okay. I will take it back to this council. I will entertain a motion.
I will, and I will make a motion that we continue both resolution... I'm sorry.
Round of applause.
Yeah, 12 and 13, and that we reach out via city staff to these government affairs officials to try to facilitate communication with the city.
Can I ask how long? You need to give us, you know, when do you want us to bring this contract back?
60 days, fair. Would that put us in July, till July 1, right? That sounds fair? That's when the bill goes into... It actually goes into effect?
You will put us behind that, but, you know, whatever you say, you know, if city council approves a delay.
Your motion is to basically table these two...
Yep, just for...
For 60 days.
60 days. Let's see if we can communicate with these guys, and let's perhaps bring in someone from outside to give us help, because we need to further understand this and the future impacts of our city. So...
A second.
I was gonna say, I mean, I don't know about the bringing in of help. I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's not... That's something else we need to discuss. So, you're just tabling these right now. The motion is to just...
Yep. My motion is to table the two.
And then, next workshop, we'll discuss.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Whatever. Yeah, right.
I think we had a second, but should I formally do it again?
You have a second, so...
Or for 30... For 60 days, is what?
60 days. Called a question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion dies, for lack of majority. We'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I propose we move to approve agenda items 12 and 13. Did I get that right? 12 and 13.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, no, whatever you guys say.
Want to do a roll call vote? Vice Mayor O'Beal?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
In the negative.
Councilmember Shipley?
No.
And Mayor... Sorry, Mayor Holland.[983.32][983.32](Laughter)
Of course I have.
Oh!
We needed a little levy. Come on.
It's gonna cause an email.[995.44][995.44](Laughter)
I think that's the first roll call we've done with you, so I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's...
What's your vote?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mayor, the motion passes 3 to 2.
Okay. We'll now move to agenda item number 14, which is other business. Appoint two members to the Volunteer Firefighters Pension Fund Board and affirm member appointed by the volunteer firefighters.
Virginia handles this. I'll let her let you know what's going on with this one.
The Volunteer Firefighter Pension Board has two positions open and one for reaffirmation. And the two members that are currently on the board, Daniel Brizano and Charlie Esposito, would like to be reappointed. And we do have a third applicant, Mr. McCutel. So, the paper vote coming to you is for those two applicants. So, if you could please mark the checks next to 2.
It's actually Virginia's parent.
Oh, okay.
We don't have any CD or anything for the applicant.
Oh, we did, by the way.
Yeah.
I have no idea who Stephen McCootle is.
Oops, sorry.
I mean, nothing against him, but why would I vote for him as a...
His application is upstairs available in the city clerk's office. If you wanted to review it, well, as... One second. I'm sorry. They were not in the agenda item due to the confidentiality exemption laws that are applicable to the participants. So, they are available. I do know Mr. McCutel has financial background, that I can divulge that information to you. There's two... Five votes for Daniel Brizano, five votes for Charlie Esposito.
Is there a motion to appoint them?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously.
And then, we need to reaffirm the volunteer firefighter pension... Sorry, the volunteer firefighters have appointed Rick Stevens as their member to serve in replace of Mr. Picard. So, council just needs a verbal...
Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now, move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make comment on agenda number 15 or 16, please do so at this time. Okay. We'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
15 and 16? Okay. They're moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now, move to item number D, which is public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda, please do so at this time.
Earlier, I asked two questions, and I didn't get an answer to. One was the height of cell towers, I asked, and differentiation between towers and poles. That wasn't addressed. I also asked if Diamond was the company, if we needed a cell tower, it sounded like they would put it up. But if, say, for instance, was down by the airport, where you can't put a tower up because of the height requirements, would they do the poles with minis? And that wasn't answered. So, my second part is, I've asked this before, and I don't know if the cities looked into it, the intersection of Market Place, I believe, and Bel Air, right where the bank or credit union is, and the exit behind Publix, where it comes out onto Bel Air Boulevard directly across the street from Eastwood. I've mentioned that I've seen serious accidents there. Within the past month, I've seen two duly pickups with 25, 30-foot trailers and an 18-wheeler. Just get tired of waiting for traffic, and pulled out and blocked Bel Air going north, so that... Waiting for traffic so that they could go south on Bel Air. That's, again, just an accident waiting to happen. I know it's not an easy situation, but one solution I could think of is where you have the exit there, just make that an entrance-only off of Bel Air and not an exit up to the back of where Dollar General is. They could come down Market up to Dollar General, but have that one-way only. This way, that would prevent anybody from coming out and holding up traffic, crossing traffic, et cetera, et cetera, and hopefully prevent accidents. There was one time even my wife and I finished shopping at Publix. I always go down to Central Avenue now and use the light. I noticed a car, as we were leaving, going onto Central. Somebody was going down, taking the right, go behind Publix. And I purposely looked at that car, and sure enough, I went down to the light, turned left at the light on Bel Air, and they were still waiting in traffic to get out, to try and cross Bel Air to go that way. So, going that way is not always a time saver. So, I'm just suggesting, if the city could look into it, just having that an entranceway only on the northbound side of Bel Air, turning onto Market Place. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Jack Calphamp, just one question. I'd like to ask, how do we stand with this, with the fire situation? I mean, are we in the red or in the middle? I'm curious to know how we... If we had to evacuate.
Thank you. Next speaker.
And a mayor, councilmembers, Ernie Gallo, Palm Coast resident. I petitioned this council so that I could put a plaque in Heroes Park, and I was given instructions on what to do. Followed those instructions, and I've been working with Bill Butler, and I have to tell you, he is an outstanding representative of Palm Coast, and a lot of kudos for him. Anyway, we took the... I've done everything that was asked, and we went through the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee, and my plaque was approved. And I believed that that was the end of all the hurdles for my plaque to be installed. Monday, this past Monday, I got an email and a phone call from Bill to indicate that the plaque was disapproved, that I should... If I want the plaque to go in, I need to change the wording of the plaque, which states attacked by Israeli Defense Forces. I can't change the fact that that's exactly what happened. It's an historical event. I was told that other monuments in the Heroes Park indicate a battle, but that doesn't necessarily indicate who was in the battle. For instance, World War II, Korea, so on. Well, I think everybody knows who were the perpetrators of those battles. The attack on USS Liberty, which is the most decorated naval ship for single engagement, is controversial, I admit, only because it was the Israelis that did attack the ship. But I implore you to please reconsider this denial for the plaque, because it's like the Civil War never happened, or anything else that people want to object to as far as history is concerned. Congress has lied, I should say, the government has lied to the American public about the attack.
10 seconds.
And by placing attack on the liberty, the Israel attack, that it is just simply stating the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Reconsider.
Ted Tereschek again. I'm also the president of the Daytona Beach Navy League, Navy League of the United States, and the word that we're talking about is attacked, which has been proven time and time again. Okay? The question I'd like... A couple of questions I'd like to ask is, who on the board, or does the entire board stop this from going through now, after we've already gone through the process? Is that a question you can answer right now?
No, you can finish your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
The second thing I want to say, then, is 182 men got the Purple Heart on that ship. 182. We have some 17 Purple Heart organizations within 150 miles of here, okay? I haven't contacted those people. But to get that has to be done during an attack, okay? It's not done because you walked across the street and you slipped and fell. You were under attack. The captain of the USS Liberty, Captain William McGonigal, he got the Congressional Medal of Honor. You receive that as a recipient of it. You don't win that. He saved that ship. You don't get the Congressional Medal of Honor unless you were under an attack. Period. That's what that does. Okay? I would like to know who in the community has overseen, or not overseen, but overthrown the... Where we just were at, where we got the three votes to be able to put it in the Heroes Park for... Under attack, okay? I'd like to know who did that. And if there's somebody outside of this community or in the community that's talking to the members of this board, I'd like to know who those people are. Because if you're talking to people to oppose this, then we certainly should have the right to know who those people are. And I don't know if that falls under the sunshine law or not. But if you're using one set of citizens against another set of citizens, it's just not right. Okay? Mr. Gallo here, I've known him for the past 12 years. He was on board that ship. He had to pick up body parts to clean up the mess that the Israelis did. It's a true fact, okay? I've been with him on many, many occasions. I can repeat the story probably verbatim. It really angers me that anybody would oppose this, okay? It really does. There were all American sailors on that ship. There were United States sailors, and we were attacked by our so-called... Well, you know who they attacked them. But even with that, the state of Israel, 74 people, 74% of the people in the state of Israel are of the Jewish descent. I don't know if you know it here, but in Palm Coast, we have... The synagogue here has 75 members, and out of the total citizenship, the Jewish population here comes to less than, less than 2.5% of 1%, okay? So, it seems the only opposition we usually get is either people that want to be PC or whatever.
Thank you.
Well...
Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I would like to know when the city council changed the way that resolutions are spoken about, because tonight, for the first time since I've been coming to council meetings, I saw combinations of resolutions 10 and 11 get pushed together, and one doesn't have anything to do with the other. And then 12 and 13 got pushed together. So, the residents aren't allowed to speak on each resolution like we've always been done before. My second comment was, I read in The Observer last week that the city just approved a contract, I believe, for $325,000 to provide sun shades in four parks. I would like to know, first of all, why we went with the highest bidder. Okay? Normally, you go with the lowest bidder. And then also, Palm Coast has been in existence since 1999. I believe that the parks that they put them in are going to put these sun shades in. These parks were around back then. And if we're going to keep awarding monies like $325,000 to put shades in the parks, and now we're going to put $500 and something thousand dollars for lights, but yet we can't get lights put where we need them, and we can't get the roads fixed, because the same roads that I talked about last month still haven't even been addressed. So, I would like to know if the policy has changed that we go with the highest bidder, because that's not going to work out, because once contractors find out that the city is going to go with the highest bidder, they're going to come in and put this astronomical bid in, and you folks are not going to be able to vote against it, because you've already opened up Pandora's Box and voted for a contract that was the highest bidder. And in Mr. Kufus's defense, he did come out in the paper and say that he tried to renegotiate with the contract. Well, unfortunately, he tried to close the door after the horses were out of the barn. And I would, I compliment you for trying to save his money, but nobody, you can't change what you've already decided to do. So, I do award you for taking at least the guts to stand up and say, well, wait a minute, maybe we should negotiate. But then maybe the council shouldn't have voted for the highest bidder.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I'm not going to say nothing controversial. I actually want to compliment the personnel that worked on the Bel Air South. It's looking good. And I tell you what a hell of a good job Bill Butler's people, or whoever, whatever, they were out there, and I passed by several times, one minute they had this in, next minute they had that in. And they were going and going and going in the sunshine. So, my compliments. That Bel Air South looks good. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Charles Zebra, Palm Coast. And I want to apologize for the first time I didn't mention my name. Mr. Novak, I want to apologize to you. I'm sorry to bring up your expertise and so forth. First thing I want to talk about is our water. Okay? One thing we need to change, and we're already talking about our orances, is that we don't inflict on the builders how to put in the sprinkler system, even though we have reclaimed water. I live in a corner lot, and half my reclaimed water is going down my good old channel into my stormwater, into my reservoir, because I have to spray out into the road to get my coverage. We need to have them where they point inward so that they stay on the sod instead of going into our streets. The next item is the item that I brought up last time. How is the time schedule on the lift station on Old King about putting the deodorizer system in place? That's all I have for it. Oh, thank you for Benell's presentation here. And I apologize to everybody else.
I wasn't going to write anything, but I only have three minutes. I better go quick. Madam. Mayor, I don't know if you're aware of this. I'm going basically to the Parks and Recreation Department here. This past Thursday, I was called by a friend saying that the things that were at my son's bench down at the waterfront park, his memorial bench, were being taken out of the ground and put in a box and taken away. I guess that, what I was told was that it was part of cleaning the park annually or quarterly, which I don't believe to be true. My son's bench has been there for two years, and nobody's ever touched anything. And if anybody here has gone by his bench, walking their dog or on a bike or whatever, they know that it's very meticulously taken care of. I cut my own grass, everything. Why they went by and took everything from his cross to his Red Sox hat right out of the ground and threw them in a box, I don't know. But my husband and I are the only ones that take care of it. It's there because my family's up in Massachusetts. My son was killed in a motorcycle accident. I just, I don't know, I just feel like I had to go down to the pool and pick out my son's things out of a box. I felt like I was at a rummage sale. I felt like I was violating my son all over again. I'm sure all of you have buried a loved one, but I don't know how many of you have buried a child. I felt very, I felt like my son's things were being violated all over again. I felt very disrespected and humiliated. And I know that there really isn't anything that can be done about this. I just don't understand why, if they were going to clean up a park, there were no rakes, no shovels, no clippings, nothing. The only thing that was taken were my son's things from his bench that was absolutely spotless, and the things from somebody else's bench. Nothing else was touched. And I just don't understand it. I don't want any excuses, because there's just no excuse for it. If they were going to clean, they shouldn't have been cleaning something that was already spotless. I just wish that, if this was going to be done, that maybe they could have given us some notice. I don't know, a phone call, a note, hang a note on the bench, anything. But I just, you know, I just feel like shame on Palm Coast. It's just, I've never felt so disrespected in her.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Lisa Engel, and I'm a 22-year resident here at Palm Coast. And I'd like to just irridiate a little bit more from Kathy Healy had to say. I too have a bench for my daughter at Children's Memorial Park. It's not only for my daughter, but it's also for a friend that also has passed. Both girls went to Metansus. My daughter was raised in this town, lived here her whole life. Both girls had been cremated, so we don't have a grave site to go to. First of all, I'd like to thank the city of Palm Coast for that park. It's a beautiful park, and we're very grateful for it. We're proud of it, and we take care of it. Unfortunately, on Thursday, all of our decorations were gathered up and thrown in a box and taken down to Frida Zamba Park, or Frida Zamba Pool, dumped in a box for us to go through and rummage through and bring home. We were told that there were complaints, that they were too much. They've been there since August. So, if it was too much, I apologize. All of my daughter's friends, her classmates, they go there to mourn and grieve, rest, reflect, and recall their memory. I can't police everything that's put out there, but I try. And we'll do a better job if we have to, but don't throw it all in a box. And just dump it and take it to the pool and wait for us to go there and find out it's all gone. And nothing else was touched but mine and Kathy's bench. We're not in competition with each other. We're just honoring our kids, our departed children. That's all we ask. So, if you're going to clean the park, clean the park. That's fine. Let me know whose email you can, I can give to my email or my phone number, and I'll come out and clean it. I'll save you the trouble. I'll clean it up. Three months from now, it'll all be gone. You can do your trimming, do everything. That's fine. But at least give us the respect of not dumping everything in a box for us to retrieve and then to come back and find out that we were targeted. I feel my daughter's bench was targeted. The rest of it was not. There are still other decorations out there that have been there just as long, if not longer, than ours. Again, I thank you for the park. It's beautiful, and we want to keep it that way. But, you know, let's be reasonable about it. Contact us, let us know. If it's gaudy, hey, we all know, we all have an opinion. We all know these sayings about opinions. That's fine. We're entitled to them. It's a free country. So, with that.
Thank you.
I just would like to express my thanks for the park as well.
John Brady, and I've written to you, and I think that something can be done. This was the most crass, despicable act. This is a desecration. Somebody should be held accountable. You know the people who have the bench. They have paid for the bench. They should have had the courtesy of a phone call. This is absolutely beyond belief. Somebody needs to be disciplined. Thank you.
Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Mr. Lyndon, if you could answer George's question about the height cell tower, what's the difference between poles and towers? And as far as Diamond goes, will they be putting up their own?
Okay. First of all, the presentation only showed those towers are on city property. There are other towers throughout Palm Coast, including south of State Road 100 or right on State Road 100, including on the airport property. There is a tower that's on the county property. So, that in no way means that they're, those are the only towers. The towers we're talking about are typically about 150 feet high. The poles that we're talking about are basically, the legislation defines them as 50 feet, which is approximately a light pole. So, the, right away, you're going to have a pole on private or fee sample property, you're going to have the towers. It's kind of the concept. Hope I answered that question. Yep.
And Market Place and Bel Air?
Yes. That one is.
Are we talking about Publix that used to be Albertson's?
No. We're talking State Road, excuse me, Bel Air.
Oh, okay.
First street south of Central Avenue.
I got my.
That's why the gentleman talked about, you know, if you come out of there and want to go south, you're a lot better go out to the light. We recently identified some safety issues. We had, you know, through our contacts at TPO and a grant, we had a number of things identified of improvements that need to occur along Bel Air. This intersection was one of those. I believe it's your next workshop where we're actually bringing back a contract for design of some of those improvements. I would have to find, but I believe a signal is included. I know that they've identified that that intersection needs a signal, and I'm not sure exactly where that is in that process. So, but there's other places. We have serious safety issues there, a little north of that area. So, we're trying to combine all those and make those improvements. So, the comments are not going ignored. We are in that process. The new idea of a, basically, a ride-in and ride-out, you know, we can ask our traffic engineer to take a look at that. That is difficult without change in design of the street, but it doesn't hurt to look at those kind of ideas.
Okay. And can you provide an update on our fire situation?
Yes, absolutely. First of all, it's very dry. My house, this morning, I got zero raindrops. There's other places that got some rain. I hope nobody thinks it was enough to make a difference, because it wasn't. The fire situation is very serious in Palm Coast, Flagler County, and the whole state of Florida. Flagler County Commissioners enacted a burn ban yesterday morning, and that would include Palm Coast. We have been putting out, and we have a video that we're doing and trying to encourage people to be very careful. City has a burn ban 24/7, 365 days. Your open burning in Palm Coast is not allowed, so, by ordinance. So, we already have that burn ban in place. What we're trying to do is stress to people that any kind of open fire is bad news. The county burn ban includes charcoal grills, because charcoal grills, if not handled correctly, can be a major issue. So, and we don't, we just don't, you know, our history here. So, very serious. It was one of the things I was going to bring up. You know, the only solution to this is, well, two solutions. One of them is rain, and the other one in the meantime is people being very careful with anything that might start a fire.
Because a lot of these fires that are happening in Florida are man-made fires.
Yep.
Very, very serious. I'm going to ask you to address the issues brought up by Ernie Gallo about the plaque.
Yes. The recommendation from the advisory committee, that was just one step. It has not been denied, but in doing our due diligence, because it is a national event and an event that has to do with military action, we've been advised that there is a verification process. In other words, on public property, you don't want someone putting up a plaque that deals with our national military government. And so, we will go through that process, but it is a due diligence kind of process to make sure that the, I had never heard of Israel attacking a US ship, so I'm not.
No, no.
I'm not saying it did or it didn't happen. I'm not qualified. My point is, and so, we need to make sure, because having Palm Coast be put in the middle of controversy would not be appropriate, and we really need to go through that process. What we've been told by federal officials is the correct way. So, we will do that. And, you know, the other thing that city council may need to think about and bring up if you'd like, is we've not had a plaque about a given incident or event. It is recognizing individuals from Palm Coast who have lost their lives in not just military, but also fire and police. This is really going in a different direction, and it is a good policy decision as to an event that does not, did not cause anybody from Palm Coast to lose their lives. In other words, if it did, we would definitely recognize that family and that individual. But do you want to start recognizing individual events at Heroes Park? It's a policy issue, and I think that would be appropriate for city council to decide that. But then if you do that, then there, and it has to do with a federal. But then if you do that, then there, and it has to do with a federal event, then there is a process we need to go through.
Is that something we would do a workshop on?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll discuss that in the future as far as creating a policy for what we want to make sure happens.
But we're still looking into this.
Yes.
And you'll just communicate that with Mr. Gallo as you are updated?
Right.
Okay. And to Ted's comments, they were in keeping with that, so.
Same thing.
As far as Robert, with the resolutions 10, 11, 12, and 13, it is under the discretion of the council to do that, always has been, and that's part of our policies. The $325,000 highest bidder was a recommendation upon our staff. They did their due diligence as far as the quality of material. They felt it had a longer lifespan, as well as if there's a storm or an incident, that it's easier to take down in those kind of conditions. And due to the fact that we are a coastal community and some of our parks will be housed on those, it was the recommendation that we went with the highest bidder. That's not normally the path we normally take, so it was explained by staff on why we did it this time. Thank you for your comments, Louis, as far as our staff goes. And Charles, can you explain how the builders, how that works with our staff as far as the direction of the irrigation sprinklers and codes and those kind of things?
Our standards, I don't know if it's ordinance, but I would say standards, do not allow sprinkler heads in public right-of-way. It does occur, but like in our swells, and then what happens if we have to do any maintenance, et cetera, we lots of times end up hitting them, and then it's a cost to us. This gentleman is in Hidden Lake, so there aren't any swells. But that is our standard to keep private improvements off of public right-of-way. It is, the drawback is, is that in order to do the coverage, the circular coverage, you do have to go out into the concrete or the asphalt street somewhat.
So, the question about the time schedule for the lift station deodorize? I'm not sure.
Steve can?
End of July.
End of July. It is being manufactured. I mean, this is one of those that they, these devices, they don't pull them off the shelf. And so, the answer I got was it's expected to be installed end of July.
And as far as the last three commenters, they reference the same subject matter. Can you address that?
Yeah. And this was a tough one, particularly for me, but, you know, I'm not trying to disrespect anybody. I like what I was hearing from these individuals and apologize if they felt they were being disrespected. The fact of it is, is that, I mean, I've been in cities where we've had cemeteries and people leave things at recognizing their loved ones. Eventually, you have to pick that stuff up because you just can't accumulate it. Our policy is once a month. Now, I'm hearing things like we targeted or we only did certain benches. No, not once a month, excuse me, once a quarter. We will have that discussion and make sure that's not the case. And then what I really liked was their proposal to basically be a volunteer and help us manage this. And so, I'm going to ask Alex to get a hold of them and see how they can help manage it, because we do, I know I personally have gotten the emails, I've gotten the complaints that, you know, this is supposed to be a natural area and that we got too much other things going on out there. I think my personal response is, you know, blink and move on, but
Should be, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, but I do think that it can be managed, and I like the idea you got people
Think he did.
Okay. His one blink thing, that's disrespectful, moving on.
No, here's all we got to take from this.
No, what I'm saying is
This was a foo bar.
Yeah, we need to fix it.
And somebody, but yes, we got to move on, but we got to build a culture that says, "Let's think before we hit that kind of stuff."
You misunderstood what I was saying.
No, I didn't. No, I got you.
The people walking by complaining about what they're seeing are, I don't, you know, I just don't understand that.
Right.
And I'm suggesting that they just need not to look at it and keep going if they find it objectionable. This wasn't anything about these people here whatsoever. It was the people that we get the complaints from. But that's what we do. We get different sides of those stories. We try to manage it. Once again, the idea of having volunteers help us and actually be participants in that, I really like that idea. It's their park. Let them help us. So, Alex will get a hold of them, see how we can work together on keeping it looking good within certain standards, because not everybody is willing to do what these individuals talked about.
Okay, so we'll be in touch. And now we'll go to agenda item number E, which is discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Cuff.
I have nothing further.
I have one thing. I'm going to make it quick. With all the, with the shades at the parks and the lighting and all, I'm getting emails constantly, people telling me what the laws are, and most of the time, they're wrong. My suggestion, to understand how the financing works in the city, is go to the Citizens Academy. Sign up for that, and they explain everything. You can have your questions, you know, answered. Now, you send me an email, I answer them. But it, you know, there's the, even tonight, I heard the accusations, and, you know, we got to, let's know what we're saying before we say it, and that is a good place, a great, going to that Citizens Academy is a great investment. That's all. Andrew Will.
I have a question.
Did we recover the $16,000 in fees from the red light cameras yet? That they were supposed to pay us for the uninstallation of those cameras?
We'll get back to you.
Yeah, we still got a little bit of time there. Nope, besides that, I think I'm good. Hadoop has memory leaks. You'll want to use MapReduce.
I do.
And I just, I actually had a question. It's more of a procedural question. So, when we get some of these issues that are in front of us, Jim, and I'll direct this to you. So, it gets to the point of, it goes to council, we approve these dollar amounts. In the particular issue, as, so staff gets a goal, a priority that's decided by this council, and I know you have different approaches that's sort of within the staff, but who determines what approach that is? Do you ever offer like maybe three options before the council before you go and start working with private companies? Or, I'm asking this because I think Diamond, that was a lengthy discussion that occurred, and I wasn't on the council to know if it ever came back before the council in advance to say, "This is the approach we're thinking about to meet this goal." Is this, is this an approach we can
Yeah, I understand. The same thing would be true with the shade sales and what approach we use there. When it comes to consulting, you know, in this case, that's really what we're trying to do, then we have a couple of options, request for qualifications and a request for proposals. Difference is qualifications doesn't have a price, and then we negotiate the price. The other one is with proposals that we almost always ask for the price. That is something through our procurement process that we go through. We actually are scheduled to come make presentation. We have some proposed changes to our purchasing policy, so we are going to bring that back, and we can have more of a comprehensive conversation about how all that works and our different, because we call it a bid, but the sales were not a bid. It was a request for a proposal, and then that process is different. There's quotes, there's bids, there's, you know, a variety of things. So, we have that on our schedule. I don't know how quickly, but it won't be too long before you're going to see that. Hope that's helpful.
It is. I just, I say that because it just occurred to me. We had a sort of philosophical discussion tonight, and it was interesting, but I think it's one that's good, because it really gives us a basis on the direction we want to take with some of these solution-based ideas.
Right.
Discussion by city attorney of matters, none on the agenda.
Just to address, Councilmember Clufus' last question about the $16,000 for the red, my memory was that that was something that the ATS folks were going to get back, recoup.
Yep. Unless they weren't able to actually recoup all the fees from the red light cameras, in which case the city would be responsible for paying the $16,000.
The way that works, actually, is was
That's how we discussed it in council, is that to disassemble those cameras, they're charged $16,000. So, they're going to keep a month of red light camera fees, and after, if it goes over, they'll distribute that as they normally would. But if they don't, the city would have to pay for the deconstruction
I'll certainly get back with you, but my memory was is that the contract provided that we were not going to have to come out of pocket for that. That was going to be the risk that was based upon
The time was those were going to be the first dollars.
Yeah.
They would get, yeah. That's all I have.
Counsel, our discussion by city manager of matters, none on the agenda.
Couple of exciting things, and congratulations to our utility water boys again. 11th time they have been state champions in the top op competition, which is a operator recognition of knowing both the science and the technical aspect of their business. They have been national champions, right, many times, and they're off to national competition now. So, big congratulations to our utility water operators. We also, once again, we've been designated for the 12th consecutive year as a Tree City USA. That one's pretty easy for us with our culture here and the things we do. But that leads into the one announcement, is one of the things that, how you get that is you celebrate things like Arbor Day and recognize the importance of trees. So, this Saturday, once again, is, you had the proclamation, May 6, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is Arbor Day celebration. If you're a runner or walker before that, at 8:00 a.m. is our annual 5K walk run that's associated with that, right here at Central Park. So, hopefully, people come out to that. Get a free tree if you bring a can good. Mayor, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.